Good evening and welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, January 12, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. May I please ask that if anyone is recording this meeting, if you could please identify yourself right now by either using the raise hand function or unmuting your telephone line and announcing that you are recording? Okay, seeing none, we'll turn to the business for this evening. We will start out with the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes for consideration for approval by the Board for the meeting held on December 8, 2020 and December 15, 2020. I'm prepared to move ahead with both of these sets of minutes if my colleagues are as well.
I am.
I am as well.
Okay, I'd accept a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 8, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'll move to approve the minutes dated December 15, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business on our agenda is the consideration of an agreement for the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility Project and Outdoor Pool Complex Project. We're joined this evening by Kevin Whalen, the Director of the South Shore Country Club, and Christine Smith, Chair of the South Shore Country Club Committee. Welcome and thank you both for being here. Kevin, I think I'm going to turn this over to you for an introduction of the agreement, the process. And then Christine, I'll give you a chance to chime in with anything else to add.
So, thank you very much, Mary. The process was run by the Palmroy Associates, which is the project manager contract we signed about a month and a half ago. They ran the process. We had nine bidders that bid on the project when we put it out to bid. We narrowed that down to five and we interviewed the top five. And we came to a consensus that RMD Design, which is Roddy McGrudy Design LLC, would be the winning bidder. They provided a scope of services and fees, which was, you know, very detailed. They have great experience and the fees would be for the maintenance facility would be $264,590. Master planning, which would be for the whole facility as far as, you know, the whole future of the club and how we're going to put all the different buildings and where would be $22,100. And the outdoor pool complex project would be $296,715. Now, the contract has a length of two years. It would expire 1/4/2023. So, we had a committee of Bill Friend from the Country Club Management Committee, J.R. Frye, the Town Engineer, along with other South Shore Country Club staff were on the committee that chose RMD.
Thank you. Kevin, just for purposes of the viewing audience, could you just please remind us all about the maintenance facility project? I know we've had a lot of discussion about the pool, but that maintenance facility is so integral to your operations and we haven't talked about that in a while.
Right, so there's really four main parts to the maintenance facility. And, you know, the reason why we've done this project a little bit different when we allocated the money upfront was because of the safety issues that we have in the current structure. The first part of the maintenance billing is the maintenance shop. Then the second part would be a staff and the area for staff. And then the third part would be the coal storage. And then the final piece to the design of that building would be an environmental center, a place for fuel storage and all the storage for all the chemicals and things of that nature, so that they're safe, in a safe place and kept safely. So those are kind of the four elements of the building. And one of the things that, you know, we authorized $2.2 million of spending because we felt that that's what the country club could afford to pay back. As I want to remind everyone that the country club is an enterprise account, so whatever money we do spend, we will be paying back, you know, on our own and based on the revenues that the country club generates. So, you know, although the 264 might be high for the 2.2 million, one of the things is that the project overall might have a value of, say, 2.9, and then we're going to have to pick and choose and decide what we're going to build. But the main portion of the project obviously would be the maintenance shop to ensure that our employees have a safe place to work going forward.
Thank you. Joe Fisher, question, or actually, I'm sorry, Joe, before I turn it over, Christine, as Chair of the Country Club Committee, anything to add before opening it up to questions?
Sure, thanks, Mary. The only thing that I would add is we did have a CCMC meeting this afternoon. We unanimously recommended this firm and we also authorized Kevin as the Executive Director to sign on our behalf as we presented it to the Board of Selectmen. And I think it was a good, it was a good process. It was a pretty exhaustive process. And I think we had people that were very interested in bidding and doing business with the Town of Hingham, two sort of exciting projects. And I'd like to thank Kevin and his staff, Bill Friend, for really digging in. They've gotten an awful lot of work done in a very short period of time. And we are pretty excited that we've seen that golf, which is 85% of our revenue, has really done well during a pandemic. So it's kind of nice to see. It's been a nice, I think, just kind of a nice place for people to go and be outside in a safe manner. And of course, we also have our partners with the Greenside Grill who provide a nice meal in a safe environment. I think people feel comfortable and we're excited to kind of put this capital back into the country club in a financially feasible way that we can afford to do that and to invest in our community.
Thank you. Joe Fisher, questions or comments for Kevin or Christine?
Well, first, I really want to echo the view that was just expressed that the country club is a valued asset for the town and it's important that we preserve and enhance it. I wanted to just ask a couple of questions about the contract and the scope of work. I noticed that what is excluded, not included, in this work would be an existing condition site survey, geotech subservice investigation, and hazardous material inspection. Has any of that work been done and to what extent does it have to be done before this phase of the project can commence?
So, some site work has been done. We've done elevations and things of that nature. We've done flagging for the environmental, you know, to outline all the, where the wetlands are and things of that nature and setbacks. So we have done that work. We have not done any, you know, any borings or anything of that nature to determine whether we have ledge or any of those issues, Joe.
Or whether or not there's any, you know, hazardous material around?
Yeah, we have not, we have not done any of those. You know, one of the things, I mean, where the building will most likely go previously was where the old house, Litchfield House was, that was knocked down several years ago. So, you know, I don't think that there's been anything there, but who, you know, who knows this day and age if there's any hazardous, but we will do, you know, everything we have to do to be compliant with all the regulations. And I know that we will probably be doing some borings over at the tennis courts for the, where the swimming pool would go, just to determine, you know, how much ledge would be there for excavation and things of that nature. So that would be like an extra cost.
Yep. Is there any, what is the budget for those items? Or is there a budget?
There is no, there is no budget. So we have, for those items, the cost on the outdoor pool complex project, the Community Preservation CPC has allocated $500,000 for the design of the pool. Obviously, we came in significantly under. We'll get a timeline and to see exactly how much the, if there was additional spending that needs to be done on that over the next several months. On the pool side, whatever we do spend in addition to the 264 will come out of that 2.2 million that has been allocated. And it would just mean that we will have to stay within our budget as we determine what we're going to build, you know, as far as the maintenance building is concerned.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to add one thing to that. One thing, if you look at the composition of the CCMC, our newest member, and I thank you for appointing him as Steve White, who happens to be an environmental engineer and he owns PES Associates, and Steve's got great project experience and that's what he does. So I think we've got a nice, we've got some nice talent on the committee as well.
That's great. So, Tom, this is really sort of a question for you. When we are looking at the Public Safety Facility feasibility study, we, the town, made the decision to do survey and geotech work before we were even going to begin the plan, you know, getting, you know, paying for additional planning for the project. And here, it seems like that's not happening. And I'm wondering, Tom, why, why, I understand, one, we need to do it because it was also necessary to make a decision about purchasing the site, but it was also necessary to figure out if we want to expend the money for doing, for planning. And that's going to be one of the warrant articles that we can now move forward because the site surveys and the geotech work has been done. But that's, that's been flipped in this model. And, Tom, can you just address why that makes sense here?
Well, I could tell you, you're right about the reasons why we did it at 335 Lincoln. I would add to those reasons that the, one of the big drivers behind the site assessment that we did, the site assessment work, the extensive site assessment work, was because of its former use. That site's former use was a military installation. So there was a high likelihood that there was, a likelihood anyway, that there was going to be soil problems and geotech problems and the like. Thankfully, that didn't come to fruition, but there was a high likelihood for it. Could it be done on this project? I guess it could. I haven't talked with Kevin in detail about, about the scope of this contract.
We have a meeting with the project manager tomorrow morning and also the, it's a kickoff meeting with the architect designer scheduled for 9:30, so I could bring that up. I do think one of the things, obviously, we do own the property and we have owned the property for 35 years, thereabouts at this point. So it's, I guess at this point, if there is some contamination, we own it regardless. So, you know.
I mean, right, but the issue wasn't who owns it, but really, for example, let's not, let's not design on a spot that's a hotspot. That's a problem. And so, you want to identify that before you start doing the design work. And I'm concerned that you're going to start doing the design work without having this phase looked at.
Kevin, how much was the appropriation for this, for this design work?
The, well, the total project for the $500,000 for the pool, Tom. And then it was, we have a total allocation of 2.2 million for the building, the design and the building.
Yep.
So.
I guess to sort of want, just to jump in on one thing, in terms of environmental concern, what we're building, and I understand your concern, Joe, but it's going to be so much better than what's existing in terms of containment of any environmental hazards. We have fertilizer, we have those types of things. So we, we know where it's been and we know where we're improving it. And I think we've taken, and the fact that we've owned it for so long, it will be much more helpful, it'll be very different than buying a piece of real estate that you just don't know.
Sure. I mean, I get what I'm suggesting is in terms of sequence of events to make sure that we're, we're not throwing good money on a situation until we know that it's, it's good to go.
But what I would suggest, Joe, is that we move forward with this contract as it's been procured. And then we can talk to a number of professionals, both J.R. Frye, our Town Engineer, maybe Susan Murphy, our real estate attorney, and get a sense of what's appropriate in terms of some geotech work or site assessment work that's not been contemplated in this contract. And if they would be appropriate, we could talk about whether or not we have the funds to actually engage in a separate contract to go get that work done, either, you know, in concert with this contract or otherwise from a third vendor, a third party.
Meantime, I'd certainly leave it to you to arrange sequencing. I'm not suggesting we hold.
Sure, sure. We can talk about it.
We need to get it done, but I just, again, I want to make sure we're doing it right.
And we'll talk about that starting tomorrow.
Yep.
One other question, and maybe it's here and I just don't see it. What is the timing for various items of performance in this agreement? Do we have target dates?
They did do a preliminary schedule prior to, you know, during their submission. We will be sitting down tomorrow and we'll be sitting down and talking about timelines and things of that nature tomorrow.
But are there any timelines in the contract?
So there is a timeline that they have to become, that the contract is dead 1/4/2023. We have, we've told them in the RFPs, in the RFP, that they will, you know, as far as the timelines that we are looking for to complete, they provided timelines in their responses as far as when they will get things done.
Yep. I would just encourage you to agree on a timeline with, you know, various performance items in it so that we're not stuck towards the end trying to get too much done in too little time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
What we're doing tonight is basically taking action on the town meeting article from last spring. Is that right, Tom?
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
We're having a little trouble hearing you.
I'll move, I'll move closer to the mic. What we're doing today, tonight is basically just taking action on the town meeting article from last spring, correct?
So last spring appropriated funds for, to do this, this type of work?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, Bill, when you lean in like that, we can see your molars if you open up a little bit.
I'm getting my mic fixed. I'm going to direct you in.
Um, is there, is there anyone in the public who wishes to ask a question or make a comment about this contract? If so, please use the raise hand function. Okay, seeing none. I've also had a chance to, to review the agreement. I would let people know that Town Council John Coughlin has also reviewed this agreement, which is a standard part of our process. And that this is, this is consistent with, as my colleague Bill mentioned, with the action taken by town meeting last June. So, that being said, I would accept a motion.
I would make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Roddy McGrudy Design Collaborative LLC for architect, designer services for the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility Project and Outdoor Pool Complex Project in an amount not to exceed $583,405.
Second.
Any further discussion? I would just also note for the public and for my colleagues that McGrady Design Collaborative did sign this agreement, which is again, a standard practice of this board. We typically do not sign an agreement until the other party has done so. So, all those in favor, by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Kevin? Christine? Thank you very much. Sounds like you're already going to get started tomorrow. So, we hope, we hope that that is a, we hope that that proceeds along.
And we look forward to taking, dipping in the pool.
Yeah, I know. It's, we should have some good progress over the next few months. We're looking forward to bringing back the news to you all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is to review the agreement with Safe Boats International LLC to purchase a new law enforcement vessel for the Harbor Master. We are joined by Harbor Master Ken Corson. Ken, welcome. Thank you for being here. If you could please, for the benefit of the board and the viewing public, just please provide an overview of this agreement, sources of funding. You sent the board a very comprehensive package. Perhaps you could just sort of hit the headlines for the audience, if you could, please.
Sure, absolutely. And thank you for putting this on the agenda this evening. It's a pretty straightforward agreement, I believe. This past spring, we were awarded a grant from the federal government through Port Security for the purchase of a new patrol boat. This is something that was on the five-year capital outlay to be replaced in a couple of years. Our current boats, over 20 years, it was slated to be replaced in 2017. We've been able to get a few more years out of it in anticipation of receiving a grant of this nature to replace the boat. So we received the grant and we've selected a contractor that we would like to construct the boat. It's the same contractor that built our Marine One, our other boat. It's a safe boat also, so it's going to be that same contractor. We've selected, it's a small boat. It's about 24 feet long, center console, it's a walk-around. It'll be a great platform for us to get out on and be out there with the community, be able to talk to people, get around the boat and function easily. The award, the grant award funds three-quarters of the vessel and the other 25% will be funded through FY '21 capital outlay appropriation, as well as, well, some in-kind services. And we have some other available funds that will be used to meet the 25% match. This contract basically incorporates the quote that the contractor put together and all the information and all the different things that the boat will have on it. Once the agreement's signed by the board, we'll then place an order with Safe Boat for them to start constructing the hull. It won't be constructed right away. It's going to be put in queue and when they have a space within their construction schedule, they'll start constructing the hull. But we'll still have the ability to change if need be some of the electronics and stuff. So if they have to produce the boat within the next year, but if we get into next fall and the boat's still under construction and technology changes, we still have that flexibility to make some changes there if there's better technology and so forth. So it's going to, it's going to allow us to get the boat under construction and we'll have the boat within a year after the agreement's signed. And it's going to be, just to be clear, it's going to be replacing one of our boats. It's not a new boat for the town. It's a replacement for an aging, aging boat. So that's basically the gist of what the grant is, what the agreement is, and a little bit of information on the boat that we're looking to purchase there.
Ken, what will happen to the boat that, that it is replacing? Will that, will that be solved? Will it be, what will happen to it?
That's a great question. Exactly what happens to it, I don't know at this point. I do want to have a period of overlap between the arrival of the new boat and the decommissioning of this boat, so the staff can have some time to get used to the new boat. And then I'll come back to the board and we'll make a decision as to whether, what the resale value is on the boat or if it's better to scrap or if the community wants to donate it to another town that they could have a use for it. So that's something we'll have to address. I don't plan on keeping the boat. I would like to, to get rid of it. It's aged and it needs new engines. I'm hoping not to have to put engines on it. So we'll be lucky to move it out of the town and hopefully we can find another home for it.
Thank you. Joe, questions for Ken?
I do. Ken, thank you for the presentation. And my first question, I'm looking at the stationery. It says, Kenneth R. Corson III Esquire. Did I miss that before? Are you now an attorney?
I am now an attorney. I've been an attorney for about three years. I do some maritime defense work on the side.
Well, that's wonderful. We're getting the added benefit of two skills, law and your practice as in the police department. So thank you.
There's a joke there about the dark side, Joe, but I'll let it go.
I appreciate you letting that go. It's really great that it's, it's being funded 75% by the grant. Can I just, it would, ask what may be a naive question. Why do we need a customized boat?
So it's not so much that we need a customized boat. What we need is, we need a commercial-type vessel. And to buy, you know, a lot of the recreational-type vessels, they just don't last as long as we'd like the boat to last. So it's not so much that it's a custom. If they had these boats sitting on the shelf, ready to go, we'd be able to make a purchase of it.
Okay.
But they just don't have them on the shelf. It's, as much as we, we might say it's custom, it's kind of a pretty standard 24-foot center console walk-around. Lots of communities have them. There's nothing too unique about the boat except for when you order it, they have to start construction of it.
Yep. And is there any aspect of the contract or of the arrangement that would provide for some sort of environmental sensitivity? In other words, to make sure that the boat meets certain environmental standards? And I'm not saying that it wouldn't meet minimum standards, but in terms of less pollution in the water or other issues, is that something that you, you have looked at or can be looked at?
Yes, it's definitely something we've taken into consideration. When this boat is outfitted with engines, it's going to be outfitted with four-stroke engines that are, that meet all the highest level for outboard engines that they make right now for environmental sensitivity. So it's going to have excellent engines on there that will be as cost-efficient as they can for a marine outboard and as, you know, least effect on the environment.
Great. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Bill?
In fact, what's the life expectancy of a boat like this?
Great question. So our current boat is a safe boat. We have 10 years on it now and I anticipate easily another 10 years. I'd like to say that the, our safe, our main safe boat, Marine One, I'd like to say at least I can't see why we can't get at least 30 years out of it. At some point, we might have to do a little bit of work to the boat, but I think the life expectancy of these boats is long enough that we'll get some good benefit out of it for the community. I'll probably be retiring with these boats.
Well, I tell you, it's great that we got that grant. That's wonderful news. So, thanks, Ken.
You're welcome.
Yeah. You know, I would just add, you know, Ken, I think in the last 15 months, you personally have secured grants for the Town of Hingham to the tune of about 250, $2 million, about $2.3 million. A $2 million grant for dredging, which is money that, that we as taxpayers would have had to pay for. And as you mentioned at the beginning, this was something that was on our capital plan list. And, you know, when, you know, every year, we always have more capital requests than we have available funds. So your efforts to go out and write grants and get this money is not only bringing state tax dollars back to work here in Hingham, but it's also making some of those dollars available for other, for other things that perhaps wouldn't qualify for grants. I would note that all of our municipal departments last year combined teamed up to generate close to $3 million in grant awards in various places, in, in public safety for the harbor. And it is just, it is just amazing. We're going to talk about your budget a little bit later in the night, but, you know, your annual budget is about $280,000. So, you know, basically, the money you're bringing in is just so helpful in so many ways. And, you know, I would also just say for the benefit of the public, these grants are not a sure thing. The town has to write a compelling story, do a lot of research, pay attention to all the details. And, you know, Ken, I think, I think your background, both in law enforcement and your legal background, uniquely positions you to really write compelling grants. So I just want to take the opportunity to acknowledge and recognize the tremendous financial contributions that you've made to the Town of Hingham. So thank you.
Well, you're very welcome. And I appreciate those comments, but I do want to point out that I couldn't do this on my own. I have an excellent group of assistants and specifically Joseph Driscoll, the Head Assistant Harbor Master. Last spring, when we were, when it was time to draft this, this grant application, he really took the lead on it. It was a challenging time, but, but he really spearheaded this. He took the lead and put the information together and got this grant application in on time. So I appreciate the comments, but it's not just myself. It's, it's the team of all the assistants working together.
Yeah. And Mr. Driscoll is on this evening and Joe, we would, we would also extend our thanks and appreciation. Any members of the public have a question or wish to make a comment about this agreement before the, before the board votes to execute the, the agreement? Okay, seeing none, I'd accept a motion?
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Safe Boats International LLC to purchase a new law enforcement vessel for the Harbor Master in an amount not to exceed $268,519.96 contingent on receipt of a signed agreement as presented from Safe Boats International LLC.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ken, thank you. I know we're going to be talking with you a little, a little bit later in the evening with respect to the budget for next year. Moving on to our next agenda item, and so glad to see so many people here this evening. We, as the Board of Selectmen, are going to begin reviewing some of the fiscal year 22 departmental budgets. some of the fiscal year 22 departmental budgets. This is the time of year when the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, our colleagues on the School Committee all work to prepare and review budgets. This is the budget book that, sort of just showing that a little bit, but this is a budget book that is put together every year that is, that is really the output of, of many, many hours from our department heads, from Town Administrator Tom Mayo, Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Montsegur, our, our Board of Selectmen Office Team Sharon Perfetti and Heidi Gaul. And what we're going to be doing this evening is hearing from several of our department heads with respect to budget requests. For those of you who have joined on these meetings in the past, tonight, the Board of Selectmen will not be voting on any budgets. We will not be making any budget recommendations. We wait until we hear all the budgets to vote on anything. And in particular this year, because of COVID-19, our FY22 revenue picture is not very clear right now. So, which is an additional reason that, that we will not be voting budgets. Just to let people know how this is going to work. With each of the budgets, we will ask the department head to give just a very brief overview of the department, about the services, about the budget request. And that large book that I just held up contained a lot of documents that are available on the town website. And, you know, through the discussion of budgets tonight, we won't be able to go through everything page by page. But I would encourage and invite people to take a little time to look at those pages. Learn about what the assessor does. Learn about what goes on in IT, what the staffing levels are, what the department, how the department supports, supports you, supports other departments. It, it's really an opportunity to understand a lot of how municipal government works. So with each budget, each of my colleagues will have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. We would then open it up to members of the public who again have questions or wish to make comments. And so that's how we're going to proceed. I think we're going to try to, we're going to hear 15 or 16 budgets this evening. And I would also just acknowledge that many of our colleagues from the Advisory Committee are on the line. Because part of the Advisory Committee's process is to meet with department heads, to listen to the conversation around the Board of Selectmen. The Advisory Committee will also be holding public hearings on all of these budgets. And those will begin, I believe it's next week. And, and lastly, before we start the budget process, I just think this is an opportunity and on behalf of Joe and Bill, I just want to acknowledge our deep appreciation and gratitude to every department head for the professionalism and the dedication that you've shown to the town of Hingham and to your work over the last 10 months. I don't think any of us ever had any idea of the challenges that we would all face. But within a very short period of time, all of you had to figure out how to stay open for business under really unusual circumstances. And many of you, because of COVID, had to take on a lot of additional responsibilities. So your job got tougher, your job got bigger. And yet each of you, because of your dedication and the dedication of all your teams, you, you figured out a way to get it done. We, we as a community are so grateful to each and every one of you. And I, I, I'm excited that the members of the public are going to hear tonight about all the very important work that all of you do. And, you know, it's, it's our sincere hope and we're going to hear the COVID update later tonight. It's our sincere hope that as the, as the vax, as vaccinations continue to go along, that this window of operating with an A-team and a B-team and having to figure all this out, that it's going to get a little bit easier as we go through 2021. But again, we in the town of Hingham are so, so fortunate to have each and every one of you. And we are just so very grateful. So we're going to lead off with some of our financial budgets. And I'm, I'd like to welcome Sue Nickerson, who is our town accountant. Sue is going to be walking through us five of our budgets. The budget for her department, the reserve fund budget, the debt service budget, the employee benefits budget, and the unclassified budget. Tom and Sue, how, how do you want to do this? Tom, do you want to introduce budgets? Do you want to have Sue introduce budgets?
So I think Michelle is gonna, is gonna man or person, I don't know how you say this, the, the, what do you call it? The sharing, the screen sharing for the, for the PowerPoints for each of the budgets. And so I think we'll, I'll just, Mary, I would suggest you turn it over to the department heads. They, they each know what, what, you know, best what they got, what they have to say.
Okay, so the town accountant's budget is on page 76 for Bill and Joe. Sue, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. Like Mary said, I'm the town accountant and I will present our budget for fiscal FY22. Next slide. The town accountant manages the weekly and accounts payable warrants for the town school and for the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center. We do the first half of all of this and then once those are down, we turn it over to the treasurer's office to finish the, the rest of the warrant process. We coordinate the yearly audit for the town and the liaison to the audit committee. We prepare and submit yearly comprehensive annual financial report, also lovingly known as our CAFRA, which we will be presenting in a couple of weeks to the Board of Selectmen for the FY20 financial report. We also assist in the preparation of the town's annual budget. With the staff, it, it worked closely with the Advisory Committee. We manage the workers' comp and unemployment. And the retirement office is in the accounting office, which I am the chair of the retirement board. Next slide. Reporting requirements and metrics. We produce the W2s, the 1099s for the IRS. For the Department of Revenue, I do the tax recap. We certify our free cash. We submit our Schedule A, we do quarterly taxes, and we update the DOR with new employees. We submit quarterly wages for unemployment office. Our metrics, the CAFRA, there's 45 of 351 Massachusetts municipalities that received the award. The award is a financial achievement in financial reporting. Hingham has been awarded for 23, actually, we just got FY19, so now we are 24 consecutive years of receiving this award. And there's only three municipalities with more awards than Hingham. For the retirement, the PARAC, which is the Public Employees Retirement Association Commission, is the reporting authority for the, all retirement boards. We produce an annual financial statement. We do retirements. We bring in new employees. We do transfers and withdrawals when employees leave and go someplace else. Our key initiatives is to develop and implement FY21 Financial Management Plan due to the pandemic financial uncertainty. We have coordinated with CARES Act reimbursements for COVID-19 expenses. We have now submitted six submissions to the Plymouth CARES for almost maybe $1.2 million. We have assisted with the debt issuance for the water system acquisition. We maintain the AAA credit rating. We're starting with the Long Term Capital Plan. My staff supports the Advisory Committee and the Audit Committee. We're going to implement some more additional paperless process and implement Munis upgrades. The new slide that we were asked to do this year is our COVID-19 impacts. Coordinate multiple municipal and school CARES Act reimbursing for the total of $3 million that the town has been awarded. This has been a very long process, coordinating and submitting and answering questions and getting everything signed off. We produced the monthly FY21 revenue and expenditure, expenditure analysis with the Forecast Group. We've investigated endless fraudulent unemployment claims suspended in the, the bad part about the COVID is suspending in-person consultation for retirees and new, and existing employees. It has been a difficult process. Some people, you know, retirees don't have computers. So they have to rely on the phone and it, it, it has been a strain on a lot of the retirees. Managing remote meetings via Zoom for advisory, audit, and the retirement board. I would say right now, sitting in my home on a Tuesday night, has to be one of the best things on the COVID. It's, I don't have to drive a half an hour home at 11 o'clock at night and it, it's good and bad. Next slide. Our salaries are $292,016 for requesting for FY22. We have five full-time personnel, one town accountant, one staff accountant, one payroll administrator, one accounts payable specialist, and one retirement administrator assistant. The retirement is funded by retirement, not by the tax levy. Our expenses, I am level funding for $11,355. And the biggest amount is $5,000 for conferences and training. Next slide. Or, okay, does, other budgets managed by town accountant? Before I start on that, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Joe or Bill, questions for Sue on the town accountant budget?
Yes, I do. Thank you for the presentation. That was really good. I wonder if you can just go back. I'm, I'm looking at the town accountant salaries. I'm noticing in 2019 to 2020, there was a substantial drop. And we're gradually working our way up. What was going, what, what is, what is happening with, with the salary aspect here?
Okay, from 2019 to 20, we had, we had, we had employees retire and we added employees at lower steps.
Okay. And then on the other contracted services, which is 11,352. The, again, in 2019, it was 3,000 and then it's, it's dropped. It's almost gone away. Are we now doing things inside that we were contracting outside?
No, 2019 is when we had a the attic cleanup day. And we had to hire people, hire people to come and take all the shredding out.
Yep. Okay, that makes sense. Other than that, I mean, I've gone through everything. I, I think this is an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you for being the first one on Zoom. I, I, it's, it's different.
Bill, questions for Sue on the town accountant budget?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Yeah, and Sue, just looking year over year, it looks like this budget is going up by about 2%.
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you. Sue, before asking you to go on, I'm just going to see if anyone in the public has a question or wishes to make a comment about the town accountant budget. Okay, seeing none. And Sue, just before you go on to your other budgets, and I'm gonna, we also, as part of the budget package, have detailed line item budget information. That's what, that, for members of the public, that was some, that was some of the information that Joe Fisher was referring to. So if you looked at the town accountant package of information on the town website, you would also see a printout from our Munis software that just shows a detailed breakout of all of the expenses that, that, that are related to what, what you see on your screen here. So there is more detailed information behind each of these. We're just not going through them tonight, given that it would be very difficult to see those on this screen. Sue, which budget is next?
Reserve fund, I think.
Okay, okay.
I don't know. Michelle's, Michelle's gonna, Michelle's gonna surprise me. The list right, right in front of you are all the other budgets under the town account.
Okay, why don't we go?
Yes. Yep.
Six, that's on page 64 for Bill and Joe.
Okay, next slide, Michelle.
That's it, Sue. They're all on this slide. This is your one slide for all of those budgets.
Your next budget, your next budget is reserve fund.
Oh, I thought we were going to do the ministry reports. Okay, so the reserve fund is an amount for our financial policy, 0.75% of the operating budget. The operating budget is total annual expenditures, which is Articles 4, 5, and 6, minus benefits, minus debt, minus self-sufficient budgets like South Shore Country Club, water, and sewer. You get that and you multiply it by 0.75 and that is the amount we are to reserve in a reserve fund. And that is for unforeseen expenses that arise during the fiscal year. For FY22, the recommended amount that I'm recommending is $664,578. Does anybody have any questions?
So could you just please explain to the audience how the reserve fund, you know, let's say that there's an unforeseen expense during the year. How does, how does a department access the reserve fund? Could you just walk through the process for that?
Sure. Usually I, I will have quarterly budget meetings with all departments. And when something happens unforeseen or a catastrophic event, the department will come to Tom and myself and fill out a reserve fund request and stating the reason why. And they go in front of the Board of Selectmen to review and get approved. And that goes to the Advisory Committee to get reviewed and approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, questions for Sue?
No, I just, so the number is, is 0.75%. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. No, no questions. This was clear. Thank you.
Bill? Any members of the public have any questions about the reserve fund budget? Okay, seeing none. Sue, why don't we go on to, to debt service? Joe and Bill, that one is located. That one is on page 299 in your budget book.
Okay, debt service is principal and interest for all the debt obligations of the town. There is a schedule that will be on the website attached in the package. Right now for 2022, principal is $4,122,877. And interest will be $1,584,499. There is one additional unused, non-excluded debt capacity for FY22. It'll be $196,262.
Sue, could you, what are the, what are the projects that, that, that we're paying off that the debt service, the, the principal and interest combined is, is, is just under $6 million? What projects is the town paying debt on? Do we have outstanding debt?
Well, this is our first year without the old, the old school MSBA. We are, we are done with it on foot 21. The major ones is the middle school, East School, Central Fire Station, DPW facility, the turf fields, fire truck, road improvements.
And, and we typically finance our debt over, for those big capital projects over 20 years, correct?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. And again, could you maybe just speak to the, you know, the, some of the interest rates? We, you know, as you were rattling off all those projects, I'm thinking that we have long-term debt at, at interest rates of near 2% for pretty much every one of those projects. Does that sound right?
Around 2% average, yes.
Yeah, which again, kind of goes to one of the values of our AAA bond rating Is that we are afforded access to the most competitive rates in the capital markets. Joe, questions for Sue on the debt service budget?
No, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So it looks like the, the one that's dropped off For schools That in fiscal year 21, we paid nearly 1.8 million. And this year, it's zero.
Exactly.
Yep, so that's, that's the benefit of paying that off. That's great. Thank you. I've got no questions.
And Joe, I would just mention that of that 1.7 million payment, we got the bulk of that reimbursed by the state as well.
Yes.
So while, so while the debt service is dropping off,
So it's a revenue.
We're also getting about 1.5 million less from the state.
Yep.
So it's, it's, it still helps.
Yep, I hear you.
Bill, questions for Sue on debt service?
I have no questions.
Members of the public, any questions or comments on the debt service budget? Okay.
Okay, the next, next one is group insurance.
Sue, I don't see that one on our meeting agenda.
It's under benefits.
Oh, okay, employee benefits.
Yeah, the rest of them are basically employee benefits.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, okay. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, group insurance is health and basic life insurance for employee and retirees. Increased life, we increased the life insurance benefit in FY21. We are under the GIC. We will not know our FY22 rates until the first week of March. So what we usually do for the first Set of budgets is we forecast it at 10% over this year's. So right now, my department request is $7,347,181.
And, and that is for, that is for both municipal and school employees who let the insurance?
And retirees, yes.
Okay, Joe or Bill, questions on group insurance?
And so I do, on the Retirement Expense Fund, the contributory retirement For fiscal 2022, which, you know, it's about 5.4 million.
Yeah.
That represents nearly a 7% increase over the prior year. And that, that seemed high. I didn't know why, why that's the case.
Well, for FY21, We had an article in the town meeting to increase the cola base from 13 to 14.
Okay.
And we also, this past year was our year for our actual, an actuarial valuation. And that increases our liability.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That answered my question. No, I have no other questions.
Bill, questions about, okay. And Sue, just again, for purposes of the, for the benefit of the, of the audience, our, our retirement system, I'm thinking we're about two-thirds of the way funded?
Where?
With our pension?
Yes, we're almost, almost 70%.
Which is, which actually, I think, puts us in good stead with, you know, relative to some of our peer communities. Okay, so which budget is next?
Might as well go down the list, workers' compensation. Workers' compensation is our budget to pay for job-related injuries. For FY22, I am level funding it at $330,000.
Joe or Bill, questions for Sue about the workers' comp budget?
Nope, it looks like it was been level funded for, in prior year as well.
Yes.
Bill, any questions?
No, I'm here.
Members of the public, any questions about workers' compensation? Sue, we're self-insured with workers' comp, is that correct?
Ah, yes.
So when, so when there's a workers' compensation claim, we pretty much pay for all of it. Over the last couple of years, we have set aside 330,000, we've budgeted $330,000. Has that been sufficient in the last few years?
The last two, yes.
Okay. And based on, based on, you know, what you're seeing right now with outstanding claims, you're feeling like level funding that budget will be sufficient?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to go to unemployment?
Next one is unemployment, and I, unemployment, we are A reimbursable employer benefit. That means for every dollar someone receives an unemployment, we do have to pay that one whole dollar. And I am level, level funding it at $30,000. This past year has been, I would have to say enormously Difficult with unemployment. Unfortunately, with pandemics, People come and try to find different ways of Of hacking, and we were inundated, like every other municipality and every other Business with fraudulent workers' unemployment claims. It was a long process going through to, to try to get them off our, our far bill. And we're still working on it.
Sue, is, is unemployment, if, if the town has unemployment expense for this year Because of COVID, is that something that is eligible for CARES Act reimbursement?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, so the $30,000 that we have budgeted for this year, You know, do you have a sense of where we stand with that? Are we, are we over that amount? Are we under?
For this year, if it's, if it's non-COVID related, we will be fine. With the COVID reimbursement, The bills have been extremely high, but like I said, we're still going through it to get all the fraudulent claims out.
Joe, questions for Sue about the unemployment budget?
No, I just, I'm aware of the fraudulent claims. Happened with my company, in fact, the unemployment claim was put in for me that I didn't, so It's, and the state is inundated. So I can only sympathize and hope that you get through this. It's, it's, it's crazy.
It is, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Bill, any questions for Sue on unemployment?
I'm also familiar with the unemployment fraudulent claims. And Sue, you said other municipalities, other towns got hit just as hard as we did with these fraudulent claims?
It was all over the country.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone, would anyone like to ask a question or make a comment with respect to the unemployment budget? Okay, and again, that's a 30, again, the detailed budget sheets are on the website, But that is a $30,000 budget request for next year. Sue, I think we talked a little bit about contributory retirement already. So can we, can we jump to Medicare?
Sure, Medicare is a man mandated Tax That we have to pay. Employees are deducted 1.45% of their salaries, and the employer share is the same. So the request that for FY22 is $1,177,935. Right now, that is a, just a 10% over FY21. Until I get all the budgets in, I can narrow that down more or less. But for right now, that's a placeholder.
So it's basically, it's, 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 it's formulaic based on personnel expenses.
Yes.
Okay, Joe, questions for Sue on Medicare?
Yeah, is this Municipal side, school side, or combined?
It is combined. And it also adds any outside police detail officers and the recreation kids. They do, they do pay all the revolving funds. If, if an employee is part of the revolving fund, they, we end up billing that revolving fund to pay for that portion of their Medicare. But it's every employee.
Thank you. I got no questions.
Bill, any questions for Sue on Medicare? Sue, I would just make a note that Again, I know it's very early in the process, But I believe that the preliminary school budget request from Dr. Austin Is a 5.8 million or 10% budget increase With the majority of that increase being driven by personnel, including I, I was counting in, in the presentation, it looked to me like it was an increase of about like 25 people. I think, or I think that would be an increase that would be so significant That this Medicare number is probably very, very low. And it's going to be important as we work through the budget process To try to identify, you know, the, the impact on Both Medicare and, and any other sort of people-related costs Of, of additional hires to that degree.
Okay, thank you. Group insurance would be one of them, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Sue, the next one is OPEB, and you know, that's, that's an acronym that people hear sometimes. Maybe before just talking about the budget, you could briefly describe What OPEB is, why, why it's important, and, and how the town of Hingham is, is funding this?
Okay, OPEB is Other Post-Employed Benefits. So what it is, is to budget for health insurance for future retirees. Hingham has always told their employees that when you retire, If you have been vested, which means you've been 10 years As an Hingham employee, that you can stay on our insurance for the 50%. This promise has been, has been kept. The only thing, it was never funded. So Other, OPEB budget, and we are One of only a handful of municipalities that have actually been funding this. We've been funding this since FY09. And we have an actuary company come in and they do their valuation And give us a schedule on what we should be putting in this trust To fund future retirees, their health insurance. So when we fully fund the OPEB, when it gets fully funded, and I believe it'll be 2035, You will see the group insurance budget almost cut in half Because we will be paying for the retirees' health insurance through the OPEB trust fund. So FY22's Budget request is $1,267,567.
Is this one of the years when, when Linda Bornival will be doing an actuarial analysis to See if our funding schedule is, is on track, or is that next year, Sue?
Nope, she just completed it. And if, if you would like, I will ask her to come to a future meeting and give her, give the presentation.
And, and are we, is, is the $1,267 being requested? Is that, is that in line with her recommendations?
It is in line with her schedule, yes.
Okay, so could you also maybe just briefly talk to the importance of OPEB relative to our bond rating? You know, you mentioned at the beginning that you were part of the team that, that's been so involved in debt issuances and the credit rating. And, you know, you were, you were here in 2007, 2008, when the town was put on credit watch. How, how does OPEB relate to our credit rating?
Oh, it's very important. So that's one of the main things, or one of the things that the credit agencies look at, is how we are funding OPEB. Triple, triple, triple A is It's very, very important to, to keep funding it. And we are supposed to all be funded by, I believe it's 2040. And we are slated to be fully funded in 2035.
Yeah, I, I remember when we started saving for OPEB, We were told that if we didn't start setting aside money for retiree health insurance, That by like the year 2035, 25% of our operating budget Would be needed to fund group insurance.
Yes.
Because of the rising cost of healthcare and the number of people and the promise the town has made. So, you know, right now, insurance, group insurance is about 10, I think it's about 10 or 11% of our budget. So what, what we're trying to do now is to make sure that it, it remains at that level. Joe, any questions for Sue about OPEB?
Yes, how are those funds held? How are they invested?
They are invested with the PRRIT fund, along with our retirement.
And how is that investment doing?
Actually, I think it is doing very, very well. We also have the town treasurer on the phone, too.
I believe Jean is on the line.
I believe we, we have assumed rate of, we, we did Reduce our assumed rate from seven and a half to 7.4%. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, both have, did their 7%.
That's, that's great. Thank you.
The, the benefit to having the OPEB funds in, it's actually managed by the PRRIT fund. It's in the state retirees' benefit trust. And by putting our funds in with that, we have the advantage of prudent investment Investing, which is more than a treasurer can do on their own under the statute. And we have the co-mingling of a very large fund. So the decision was made to Use that vehicle for our investment and it's, it's We've been pleased with it.
Thank you, thank you, Jean. Bill, any questions for Sue on OPEB?
Yeah, but you can explain what the PRRIT fund is.
Is that, Sue or Jean, could you explain it?
That's the Pension Reserve Investment Trust Fund. So it's the state's, it's the Massachusetts State Retirement, it's, and it's, it's managed, I always get these acronyms mixed up. The fund is managed by the retire, the state's retirement board. And we also have all of our retirement funds invested in this vehicle as well. Some communities keep their retirement funds and their open, OPEB funds outside of that. But we have found that it's well-run and it puts the investment responsibility With a very qualified board, and we get the, again, the benefit Of their investment expertise. And we are so well-funded on retirement And getting there with OPEB that even if The state retirement fund is more aggressively funded, you know, it, you know, we're okay there. We're, we're going to benefit from their investment portfolio. So It's the state's retirement fund.
Bill, anything else? Any questions from the public on, and I apologize, I didn't ask about medic, on either Medicare or OPEB? Okay, seeing none, Sue, insurance?
My last one. Insurance, property and liability insurance. For FY22, my request is $1,028,087. This is to insure all property, vehicles, Any, any other insurance for the town and/or school.
Sue, the, it looks like it's about a 25% increase from last year. What, what is driving that increase? It's about $250,000, $275,000?
Well, FY21, that is the budget, and we have, we have gone over the budget already. And it is due to the last three or four years, we have had extreme Large claims.
What were some of those claims?
The three biggest ones was the middle school roof, The high school fire, and the East School flood.
And Sue, does, um, Within FY21, the town began insuring the assets associated with the purchase of the water company. Is, is the water company Is is the Water Company Enterprise Fund budget paying its share of the property and casualty insurance for this year and next year?
It will be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, any questions for Sue on insurance?
Two. So first, Mary, that's a 35% increase, not a 25% increase. But so it's it was big. It and to what extent do we bid out this the insurance and how often and when's the next time that happens?
Municipalities do not have to go out to bid for property insurance. But I do believe we will be going, and I am not exactly sure when the next time we are. That would be up to the town administrator.
It'll be happening for next for the following fiscal year, Joe.
Great, thank you.
Bill, any questions on insurance?
No questions.
Any members of the public, questions on insurance? Okay, seen none. Sue, thank you very much for for all the for all the budget budget overviews. And again, the time that you've had to invest in CARES Act reimbursement, management of our fiscal management plan, and the added complication of having to chase down all the unemployment claims, which was an impediment to submitting for CARES Act reimbursement. You know, your team of five people has been doing the work of 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 many more than that, and we so much appreciate all the great work that that you and your team do in so many different ways. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And Ken Korsen said it right. It takes a team.
Well, we're glad we're glad you're part of our team.
Thank you.
And you can't take Ken onto your team, so just.
Tom, I think the next budget we have is dispatch, and I I think that's you.
Yeah, sure, I can do that. Yep.
And Tom, maybe you could just describe again for the benefit of the audience, just, oh, I I think the slide is there. There we go.
It's like magic. Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, so the Shrek is our, we call it the Shrek. It's not a big, green, ugly monster. It's our South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center. That's our dispatchers, our regional dispatchers for the four communities that join together to to provide these services for each of our towns. Some, Sue, what? To eight years ago, 10 years ago?
It started January 1, 2012.
There you go. So eight years ago, nine years ago. It the the service serves the towns of Hingham, Hull, Norwell, and Cohasset. As you can see here, served by 17 dispatchers, five supervisors, a director and an assistant director across the entirety of the service. So for all four towns, we saw some 70, almost 74,000 calls for service in 2020. In Hingham, you can see the biggest one would be medical aid or building checks and the like. And right now, the anticipated project projected assessment is 941,182.
Tom, how is that assessment determined within the member towns?
By population. It's a it's a formulaic.
Joe, any questions for Tom about Shrek?
Yet, Tom, I mean, this this amount requested is about $5,000 less than last year. Why the decrease?
So FY21 was was five, excuse me?
It was 21 was a big jump over 20.
Right. So that was a Sue's, correct me if I'm wrong, that was a 5% increase. It wasn't just the Hingham assessment. So this year it is just the Hingham assessment based on our population numbers. Is that right, Sue?
Yes. What happens, Joe, is Shrek doesn't start their budget process until after we're already done. So in 21, we just took a 5% of the total. And when the budget came in, the assessment was less. So this year, we just did the 5% of what this year actual is going to be.
And that so, for instance, Joe, we I had a Shrek meeting this morning of the executive of the directors, the board with all the chiefs in the four towns as we do monthly. And it was put off, I believe, until two weeks from now that we're going to have our first budget meeting. So there are the the Shrek in general, similar to the schools and some towns, are are a few weeks behind the municipal process.
Yep. So, I mean, Tom, the next time we're going over Shrek, we need donkey, we need princess. We need all those folks. I I've got no other question.
Bill, any questions on the Shrek budget? Okay, Tom, just, you know, we we asked this every year as part of the budget. My understanding is that Shrek has capacity to take on, you know, additional town or towns should should that ever be in the works, which, you know, the the benefit there is that you'd be spreading those costs over over more communities. So in effect, you know, we would be getting, you know, a lot of the same service, but perhaps at a lower cost. Is there is there anything on the horizon relative to bringing any additional communities into the dispatch center?
Yeah, it's a good question, Mary. So we have been, we had the Shrek Board had been lobbying and courting several towns for to see if they had interest in joining Shrek. But we have to do it in a very financially sound way. So there are upfront costs to bring in the new a new town into our into our dispatch center. We would have to standardize all of our radio equipment and the like. So there are some upfront costs that would require granting funds from the state. And perhaps some additional costs from from the four or from what would be the, you know, the five towns together to bring everybody back up to speed together. That would also potentially chew into our our potential grant funding. So we evaluated it, looked closely at it. For instance, we had spoken several times with Hanover, who just very recently made a decision to join Situets in a mini in a mini regional communication center. So these things are regularly being discussed. I know we had talked to Holbrook at one point. But those those conversations seem to have died down. Some towns really like the freedom of doing this all on their own without being part of a collaborative effort. So slowly but surely, we will grow. And if we do, it would be it will be done just in a fiscally sound manner.
Tom, do we have a space constraint as well?
So it's funny you say that. There's, yes, well, yes and no. I mean, you know, services rarely contract. Generally grow as more restrictions and and service requirements are placed on the service on the providers, then you generally need more bodies to provide those services. And as you need more bodies, you need more space. Right now, we have sufficient space for the for the program. It's possible that when we when we get to redesigning the senior center here over the next several years, we had talked about the second floor, the existing police station, perhaps expanding some of the the school department into some of that space. It's also possible that there's a role or a way to expand the Shrek, some additional square footage for the Shrek with that effort as well. So could they use more space? Of course, sure, everybody could. Is it imperative for their operations right now? No.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone have a question or wish to make a comment about the Shrek budget? Okay, Tom, thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Jean Montgomery, our treasurer collector. And before Jean walks through her department and what they do, I just want to remind the public that up until about six or seven years ago, Jean's position was an elected position. And town meeting, in its infinite wisdom, decided that this was such an important job that we that it it really should be an appointed position because of all of the different things that it does. And Jean, every time you walk through what your department does and the the financial responsibility you have for for the citizens' money, for the towns' money, I continue to be amazed that for so many years, that was an elected position where, you know, it it could be done based on popularity. I'm so glad that you were elected to the role. But I'm also delighted that in in the appointed capacity that that you've stayed on. So welcome and please, I'll I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mary. So this is the they've asked us to just give everybody an overview of what we do. This is pretty much the same template that I had used last year. And there's a lot of lot of reading, a lot of things on it. But I think as I look at it and I think about the year we've had and with COVID, you know, I can probably at least explain to you a little about how how have we gotten all this done? We are one of those departments that when COVID shut everything down, it doesn't shut down finance. You know, we still need to get the the tax bills out. We still need to get the revenue in. Everything still needs to keep going. So we've been, you know, quietly completing all of this for the last 10 months. And when so we've done it by, as you can see from this slide, we have, we're two offices, really blended into one, the treasurer and the collector side. So our teams have been broken up into like Team A, which is treasury work, and Team B, which is collector work. And that's worked worked very well. So we have Team A in on certain days and Team B in on certain days. And thanks to the administration and the 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 great plan that you all put into place and got us set up with our remote workstations and our VPN access, we've been able to work full time throughout all of this. And that's really the only way that we've been able to get all this done, like like everybody else. So thank you for that support. When COVID first hit last March, it was extremely scary to be sitting there and 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 told you had to go home and how you were going to accomplish this. And looking back over it, it's just amazing what the town has been able to accomplish by pulling us all together and encouraging us and providing us with what we needed to do a hybrid type of workforce workplace with our employees. So thank you for that. And I have a staff of, I'll jump around on this because we'll cover it all easily. I have a staff of four full-time and two part-time employees that have split up quite nicely into the Team A and the Team B. And they're very independent workers, and it has all worked amazingly well. And I'm just very proud of all that they've done. The I've sort of been in, I'm working on the Team A, which is the treasurer's side. So I'm in with my revenue receipts administrator and one of my tax receipt people. My assistant treasurer collector, Laurie Magna, has taken the bull by the horns on the tax collections, and she's been the one, the driving force behind issuing all of those tax bills and keeping the tax side running and getting all that tax revenue in. So that's pretty much how we've we've handled all of these activities. So I think if Michelle, if you're hitting the button, we can kind of just cruise through these these others. So we all know that on the treasury side, we're handling the cash, the investment. We've issued the debt. I've still continued to work on several committees, which I agree with Sue. It's much nicer to be on the committees from from Zoom. That is probably one of the pluses I like. I'll give COVID a plus for that one. And the treasurer is also responsible for the investment. So treasury work lends itself a little easier to remote work and at-home office work than, next slide, the collector side. So we have to get, we have our collectus team in there a good 21 hours a week because so much of that is customer service oriented and they need to be on the phones. Actually, the one of the people that works on Team A mans the phones when Team A is in the office as well. So you can kind of glance through that and see that, you know, the collector is also just, you can just imagine it. We bill out 70,000 bills a year and collect on 70,000 bills a year and bring in, you know, 100 million dollars in revenue through the office. So it's a busy office. Next slide. We asked for a benchmark. We do try to bring in close to 99% by fiscal year end on the tax types, particularly real estate. That's our biggest revenue driver. For COVID-19, you'll see that we did drop a little into the 98%. That probably translates into maybe 860,000, something like that in revenue. And that was mainly due to the fact that we opted to give the taxpayers an extra month to pay that May 1 tax bill, which I think was very much appreciated. So that just shortened your treasurer collectors' collection year by one month. We caught up on that 1% shortly into the beginning of fiscal year 21. So while there's a little dip there, it was not harmful in any way, and we were able to recover. So we're back on our our benchmark. So what are our initiatives? Just to continue to perform at 100% while we're adhering to the COVID-19 staffing and all of the workplace safety restrictions is a priority. Ware River Water System is still, we're a little bit involved in that. Where all of the Ware River revenue is coming in through our office. So we're taking that in and there will be, we're working a little bit with the transition as Aquarian will be dropping the collections. And SUEZ will be picking them up. We're kind of in the middle of all of that because the money ultimately ends up in our office. I might just mention to any taxpayers out there, our water system people, while we do in our office, collect the all the tax bills and we collect the sewer revenue, we're not collecting the water company revenue. That is collected by the water company itself through Aquarian slash SUEZ. So you do need to send your water bills to the address on your water bill. And and because when it comes into our office, we have to turn around and re-mail those out to someplace else. So that's just something you have to kind of get used to. So that's pretty much what we do under the best of circumstances. And all of these things are what we have striven to maintain during the worst of circumstances over this past year. And that will can bring us to the last slide, which is just a recap of the staffing that I talked about before, the full-time personnel, the treasurer collector myself, my assistant treasurer collector, Laurie Magna, who has been amazing during all of this. My revenue receipts administrator is Nancy Leahy, who works primarily on the treasury side, another. I I just couldn't live without these people. And I have tax receipt clerk full-time, which is Mary Jane Deech and Linda Kelly and Jennifer Don are our part-time tax receipt clerks. So they're the ones that are in there answering the telephone, answering the emails, calling you back at all hours, answering your emails at all hours and doing the best we can to meet your needs as quickly and efficiently as we can under these circumstances. So my budget, so that's what we're doing. I think the you selectmen have whatever page it is in your budget book. What I'm requesting this year is the level service budget. It also happens to be a level funded budget of 417,147. This is actually a 0.6 or like a half a percent decrease from our FY21 approved budget. And this is due, this is in dollars and cents. We're down about 2,500. It's due to the following factors. I'll just skim by them because it's a small amount of money. Salaries are down 5,400 because I have a step-two new employee replacing a retired employee. And my expenses are up by about 2,900. And we have had, due to COVID, we have had kind of a, I think it's significant for my budget in postage use. Our postage is up by about 3,400. So we've put that into the request. But our, we no longer need a telephone line for our registry of motor vehicle flagging system. So this all nets out to a decrease of 2,500 in the budget for FY22. So if you have any questions.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for Jean?
That was so complete. I'm struggling to come up with a question, Jean, but that I really don't. I mean, you and your team are just working wonders for the town. So so thank you. This is not a budget question. It's just one thing I picked up in your presentation. I noted that there were 38 tax liens and 17 active foreclosures going on. I'm wondering, how does that compare to last year?
That is a good question. So the one thing I did not do during the COVID, this COVID term, is I did not do tax takings last spring. And it wasn't because I couldn't. It was because I chose not to. So when we were unsure of how this was really going to impact our taxpayers, we did not do, I did not do tax liens last year. So I'll be doing a double year next year. So we are actually in, I think we've only had one tax lien account paid off in this year. But we, we're low. Our tax liens are in, we're in good, good shape. The tax foreclosure cases are inland court and they're progressing slowly. I have not taken a proactive approach on either the foreclosures that are inland court or on tax liens for current taxpayers who are delinquent this past year. This will be, however, that being said, this is on the agenda for the spring.
Thank you.
Bill, any questions for Jean?
Oh, good job, Jean. Thank you.
Jean, I appreciate the decisions that you've made relative to liens and foreclosures over the past several months. Any members of the public have a question or wish to make a comment about the Treasurer/Collector's budget? Okay, Jean, thank you so much. And please pass along our appreciation to the rest of your team as well.
Thank you very much.
Our next, our next budget is the Assessor. And I am pleased to introduce Erin Walsh, who, who took over as the Head of Assessing and the Director of the Department this past year. Preceding, prior to that, Erin was the Assistant Assessor. And she actually took over for Rick Nowlan just around the time the town was issuing $114 million worth of debt for the water system. So Erin, you've, you've had quite a year between, between COVID and everything else. But welcome and it's nice to see you again.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. It's nice to see you all as well. So I will be presenting the Assessor's Budget. And the role of the Assessor's Office is to provide financial stability to the town by fairly inequitably determining and assessing all real and personal property at its full and fair market value as of January 1st of each year. The Office administers the valuation of real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and boat excise taxes. Currently, the Office administers the assessment of over 8,700 parcels of property. I think we're in the next slide. With an assessed value of over $7.5 billion. Included in these totals are residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. We currently have approximately 6,230 single-family and 1,140 condominiums in the town. In addition, the Assessor's Office processes over 24,000 motor vehicle and boat excise tax bills each year. We also administer a variety of exemptions, which are available to reduce tax obligations for certain qualifying taxpayers. So on the next slide, it shows some of our key initiatives, which we are working on interfacing the zoning information into our vision system. We are continuing to keep up with our cyclical inspections to comply with and meet the Department of Revenue guidelines. This year's inspections were temporarily stopped in March. So we relied much more on building plans to ensure that our information was correct. One of the other initiatives is to increase the hours of our current in-house data quality inspector. Carrie Coughlin was hired in 2019 to give us more control of the frequency and quality of inspections. And she's been an excellent asset to the Office. It's great to have somebody in-house instead of relying on outside people who are from out of town and don't know the town quite as well. So prior to hiring Carrie, we relied solely on, yeah, like I said, people from outside. So this funding to, for Carrie is actually coming out of our revaluation services. So this will be a wash in terms of budget. One of the other key initiatives I think that we're looking at is increasing our use of social media to alert the public to our whereabouts when we're inspecting properties and when we're out in town. So in terms of, I think COVID impacts is the next slide. Yeah. So as I said, in March, we, we stopped all our interior inspections for a period of time. We continued to inspect the outside of homes. We continued to look at building plans to make sure that we had all the information up to date. And then we did do an analysis on just the first part of 2019 versus the first part of 2020 to see if there were any trends. And what we did see was that house sales were down. I think that you may have a different information, but they were down by about 11% in the first 10 months, 10 to 11 months of each year. I would say another couple of COVID impacts that just came up recently is that we use a company to review our personal property accounts. They go around town and pick up any new businesses. And because of COVID, they weren't able to get into businesses or they, they, they decided that they weren't going to enter into businesses because of COVID. So they had to estimate a lot of values, things such as furniture and machinery and supplies and tools. So I've received a few calls. So we've received a few calls since the beginning of the year saying that they thought that information was correct. So those personal property owners will be able to file an abatement and give us the, you know, lists, give us a list of what their inventory is and we'll be able to correct that going forward. Also, so this month, the month of January, is when home and business owners can file for an abatement on their properties. We usually request an inspection of the interior of the house. This year, we are going to continue with the exterior inspections and be relying on videos and photographs of interiors just to continue to keep everybody safe until we can get through this. And then in terms of the budget, it's a level service budget. There are a few changes to salaries or actually, our salaries went down because of, as you said, Rick had retired and I took over. We also just hired Jackie Barard in our office to fill the role of the Assistant Assessor. And now we're looking to fill the role of Jackie's position so we can be up to speed. We also have, as I mentioned, Carrie as Quality Inspector and then one part-time assessing technician and three board members. Do you have any questions?
Joe, any questions for Erin? I think you're muted.
There we go. I was complimenting you, Erin, for a great presentation. It looks like your budget is down about 9% from last year. So that's, it's a, it's a real accomplishment. Let me see. I did have one question. Let's see. Yes. To what extent are you, and this may be a question for you and Tom, to what extent do you use the town's GIS technology? And is that part of your budget, the mapping technology?
So we do, we have $6,000 or last year we had $6,000 in our mapping budget. And this year we're only requesting 500 because we did use a service. And Tom, you can speak to about the hiring of a GIS specialist.
So last year, we, we took a lot of the individual departments' budgets for GIS services and, and we took them out of their individual budgets. And then we hired a, or we funded the position of a GIS Coordinator. I'm actually in the process of interviewing for that position. We posted, received interviews, and I'll be interviewing for that position tomorrow. So that will hopefully be filled in the short term. But once that position is filled internally, the service will be provided as a function of our local government and does, it no longer requires individual budget line items from different towns.
Yeah, I mean, it's just amazing, I think, how GIS is integral to so many different departments. So thank you for pursuing that, Tom.
Yes.
Yes.
I've got no questions.
Bill, any questions for Erin?
Erin, just a quick question. I saw one of your metrics here that last year you processed 41 abatements and 239 exemptions. Are those typical, normally typical numbers?
They really vary year to year. I would say the exemptions are pretty typical. Abatements change every year and we don't know really what to expect. The year I started, I think we had about 130 abatements. And then they've gone down every year since then. So we, we really don't know what to expect this year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any members of the public have a question or comment with respect to the Assessor's Budget? Okay, Erin, thanks so much for joining us tonight. Next, I would like to introduce Lisa Campbell, who is our Director of Human Resources. And the Human Resources Budget for my colleagues is located on page 37 in your budget books. Welcome, Lisa.
Thanks, Mary. Okay. So the primary function of the Human Resources Department is to manage and supervise the town's human resources functions for all non-school employees. Examples of those functions are assisting the Personnel Board in administration of the Personnel Bylaw, assisting in the recruitment and selection process for positions that the town's hiring for, helping with the collective bargaining process, offering training and development opportunities as they're needed, and assisting in the management of labor relations issues. Our major initiatives for this year is that we're implementing the Wage and Classification Study. And we're also implementing a quarterly training program that's in collaboration with the Town's Employee Assistance Program. We're also working, you know, as an ongoing initiative, we have our ethics training for all of the employees, which includes the special municipal employees. We manage the yearly open enrollment for benefits. And we're, it's an ongoing initiative to manage and maintain the I-9 Record Keeping, Retention, and Destruction System that we put into place last year. Next slide. COVID's, you know, created a lot of challenges for everybody. And our department, Department is no exception to that. There's been an increase in health and dental insurance enrollments due to qualifying events, such as people losing employment, needing to get on and off based off of spousal situations with their employment. We've had an increase in life insurance inquiries. You know, if there wasn't a situation where somebody had lost a loved one and they needed to access their life insurance, it really did make people think about where their life insurance was and where they were in the process of it. So there's been a lot of questions about, do I have my beneficiaries updated, you know, as everything in line for myself? We shifted completely to an electronic open enrollment system for health and dental very, very quickly. There were still obviously some paper that was involved, paper applications. But the GIC had created a beta system for online enroll, as an online enrollment tool for the coordinator. And they very quickly shifted that out of beta. And, you know, with a fingers crossed on both hands and both toes, you know, we, we were able to use that system and it made things a lot easier to be able to conduct an open enrollment in a virtual environment. We have had an increase in some leaves of absences by 12 and a half percent. You know, that's just inevitable when you come into a pandemic and people have health situations. But, you know, hopefully that is going to get better as the vaccine rolls out. We've assisted in the development and the implementation of COVID-19, the return to work and sick leave policies that Michelle and Tom have done the lion's share on. But, you know, our department would help whenever possible. And we create and, and there was a creation and maintenance of the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act that has since expired on December 31st. But there were policies and processes that had to be evaluated and put into place and managed throughout the entire time of that. Our budget, there is a small request in expenses in the amount of $3,650. And the total budget request that we're asking for is $151,274. The majority of our budget is for salary requests. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lisa. Joe, any questions for Lisa?
Lisa, thank you. Yeah, so the last department we looked at had a 9% decrease. You're showing about a 9% increase over last year. And it looks like the, the largest source of that increase is part-time clerical services. Is that correct?
Yeah. So we have had a couple step increases between myself and the Benefits Coordinator. And we also have, because of the needs that COVID has presented with the additional work, we've had the ability to increase her hours slightly from 24 to 28 hours.
So that's the part-time clerical services?
Correct. That's our Benefits Coordinator.
Oh, I got it. Okay. So everything else looks, looks great. I really appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Bill, any questions for Lisa?
No questions. Thank you.
I just want to mention, you know, Lisa, you, you mentioned the Wage and Classification Study in one bullet. And, you know, that is, that is, that is such a significant body of work that I just want to highlight that and how important it is. One of the things that we as a town do from time to time is that we look at all of the, all of the exempt positions, all of the positions, all of the positions that we have that are not governed by collective bargaining agreements. And so that's all the positions that we've been talking about tonight. So it's Jean's team and Sue's team. It's Steve Becker's team. And we go through a very comprehensive look to look at the roles and responsibilities and then compare those to our benchmark communities to understand where our compensation lies. As, as a municipality, what we strive to do is to have our salaries be just above the midpoint of our benchmark communities. So if we have 20 benchmark communities, we want to be ranked number nine or 10. And so what we do periodically is we do a lot of research to sort of see where we are and make sure that all these very talented people that you're hearing from tonight are being paid a competitive salary. So that's, that's a very big undertaking that Lisa has been spearheading in conjunction with Michelle and Tom and our Personnel Board. But it is so crucial to retaining the, just the very dedicated people that you've heard from tonight. So I know that's really been a heavy lift for you, Lisa. And I know COVID has added things to your plate and it's made doing, finishing this study more complicated. But it is so crucial to retention. So we, we appreciate your efforts on that and everything else.
Oh, thank you, Mary. But just to echo everybody else, I mean, like you mentioned, this is, you know, Michelle and Tom and I, this is a huge team effort and we ask for information from other departments as well. And, you know, we couldn't do it if we weren't all doing it together.
Does anyone, anyone in the public have a question or a comment with respect to the Human Resources Budget? Excuse me. Okay, seeing none. Lisa, thank you. I'd next like to introduce Steve Becker, who is the Director of Information Technology for the town. Bill and Joe, the IT budget is located on page 45 in your budget books. Good evening, Steve. Welcome.
Evening, Mary. How you doing? How's everybody doing?
Great.
All right. We'll get, we'll get started with this. A little overview of our department. We provide the technology to all 26 town departments, except for the light plant, across 16 locations that are all connected via fiber. We implement and monitor Social Security defenses, firewalls, spam, web filters, assessments, mitigation, responsible for over 300 user accounts. responsible for over 300 user accounts, security service, basically have a volume of numbers, basically anything that touches the network, we're involved with. Responsible for the telephone system and 750 telephones across all locations. We provide procurement, configuration, deployment, maintenance, removal and disposal of any technology. And we're also responsible for the administration of three websites and 11 social media accounts. Next slide, please. Benchmarks in the 12-month period between October 1st, 2019 and September 30th, 2020. We had almost between help desk calls and other calls such as setting up new users, terminating user accounts, website postings, things like that. We averaged almost 10.75 calls a day. We call it 11. But, and that doesn't include the normal day-to-day tasks, which include any projects, documenting, procedures, policies, budgeting, surement, deployment of desktops, maintenance on existing equipment, service, infrastructure equipment, backup testing, public records request, list kind of goes on. Next slide, please. Key initiatives for this year. We're actually, should be starting probably within the next month of replacing our existing fiber INET, which connects all municipal buildings together. This is the way that phones connect. This is the way that, you know, fire station is able to have email and access files and applications within the town hall. We're going to be replacing that with a redundant loop. Currently, our fiber is not redundant. In the event that a telephone pole in town goes down, that may affect a location. Until it is repaired, the redundant loop will provide an alternate path for that data to go across and keep us running until the, the issue is repaired. We're investigating the upgrade of the IT data center that was funded. We're still going through that process. COVID-19, as anybody can attest to, has refocused our priorities this year and had us doing a little bit of the dance at the beginning. But we're unable to get everybody set up with VPN access that needed it. We purchased 57 new laptops to roll out to people for remote app access. We set up Zoom for the staff and public meetings, as well as the ongoing meeting scheduling and administration of the video archives. We're currently in the middle of a file server migration to a new server. Our email server will be migrated shortly thereafter. Continuing to do switch upgrades, which connects different portions of town hall to the data center. And it also, they also connect remote locations to the town hall. We're going to be adding additional exterior cameras on the town hall. Next slide, please. COVID-19 impacts. We had to ramp up the virtual private network to increase the number of users. We had also deployed, at the time, at the very beginning, we were actually deploying some desktops to people's homes so that they could access it. Luckily, we had laptops, desktops that were the mini form factor with wireless built in and it made it fairly easy. Then we purchased the additional laptops to get more people online. We've been, we've had to implement the Zoom meetings as I spoke about. We supported the COVID-19 Incident Management Team and were involved in those meetings. We had the alternate schedules between the team. So Kate Richardson is our systems analyst and Joe Lindsay is the network technician. And the, it is definitely provided some challenges for us. Where before, you know, for discussing a resolution is something we could, we'd typically all be together and we could discuss it and what we did and how we did it and what we need to do the next time. That is not as easy. We have the occasional Zoom meetings, but it's not that continual conversation that we have. But, because everybody else, you know, working, working to our best ability with it and it's, it's working. Next slide, please. Staff and expenses. Salaries are $375,588. This is for full-time personnel, myself, assistant analyst, network technician and the GIS coordinator, which hasn't been hired, but we're in process of bringing that person on. 20% of the three top positions, my position, the systems analyst and the network technician, 20% of that salary is reimbursed by the school system because we support them as well. For the GIS coordinator, 25% of that salary is going to be reimbursed by the water company as they will receive benefits of the GIS coordinator as well. So it's going to be a total request of $295,439. Expenses, $276,714. A major item for that is service and support agreements. Many of the providers will increase 5% each year. Some a little more, some a little less, but on average about 5%. And some of the other funds within there, computer supplies that stay in static, repair and maintenance stays in static and administrative account is staying stacked as well. That was $3,000. That's it. Any questions?
Joe, any questions for Steve?
Steve, so thank you. Your department is so critical to the operation of the town. And I'm noticing that your, your budget from last year is down about 15%. And it looks like the bulk of that is that you have $0 allocated for IT upgrades in 2022. At least from what I'm seeing, is, is that correct?
Yeah, that capital expense is not listed there.
I'm sorry?
The capital expense for IT upgrades, that's normal, replacement of desktops, infrastructure devices. That, that is actually missing from there. It's $110,000.
Okay, so that, so right, because it's not in the document I'm looking at and that would normalize the budget. Okay.
Yeah, that goes through the capital outlay, Joe.
So it's not an operating budget item?
No, it's for capital.
It's capital. Capital outlay.
But in prior, in prior years, it looks like it was operating. That's why I'm, at least that's what I'm seeing.
No, it was actually, it was capital before. It was just, I mean, it was listed there, but it's under, if you can see it under, where it says the code 11373, information technology capital.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Joe. Yeah. Once the capital budget is recommended by capital outlay and finalized, that'll get populated.
It'll be allocated. Okay, got it. Okay. Okay, no other questions. Thanks.
Bill, any questions for Steve?
Oh, thanks, Steve. I had the same question, but reduction. Thank you for answering.
Mary, can I, can I jump in?
Please.
Before you jump on. So, you know, just to underscore what you just heard, Steve took his, the town's ability to work remotely by about 50 people and upgraded it, more than doubled it, to almost 120 people. Steve, Kate and Joe, that is, that is what made our, what made it possible for us to work remotely and keep our people safe. So it's more than just being efficient and, and, and our, our ability to serve the public. It was about potentially not to be too dramatic, but potentially saving lives of his fellow workers. So that's the level of effort that they gave. That's the level of importance I put on it. And Steve, I can't thank you enough. And the good news is I think I heard Steve say something about maybe postponing his retirement. Is that true, Steve?
I, I heard it as well.
I heard that too. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that's fake news.
Very good, Steve.
We have, we have, we have 48 people on this call and I think 47 heard you weren't retiring. You know, and, and I just want to echo what, what Tom said, you know, in, in late, in, in late February and, and things were still unfolding. I mean, we, we knew it was serious, but we didn't know quite what was going on. It was Steve who took the initiative and kind of said, hey, we need to get ready for the fact that this building is going to be shut down. And in the two weeks leading up to the shutdown, different department heads and different employees were getting sent home with laptops to sort of set up the VPN and make sure everything was working. And, you know, for those, for those hundred or so people that were working remotely, they had to go through the setup one time. Steve and Kate and Joe had to do it many, many times. But when we shut down as a town, we did not miss a beat. And that was because of the foresight and just the ability of, of our team. So, you know, Steve, Kate, Joe, um, thank you. We just, the, the support you provide is always so crucial. But, and in these last several months, it's, it's just been, it's just been essential. And, you know, we also talked about getting some of these capital projects in flight. Steve, to take advantage of your institutional knowledge and your expertise. And, and I'm glad that those are still going forward because that will continue to set the town up for success.
I appreciate it. I just, I can't say enough about the support we've received from, from you guys. Tom and Michelle, I know they've been working some, some, some long hours. And as everybody else says, I can't, you know, can't say enough about Kate Richardson and Joe Lindsay. They've just been unbelievable during this.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And please pass along our appreciation to them.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I would like to introduce our Director of Veteran Services, Keith German. We're going to go through three budgets, Veterans Service, GAR Hall and Celebrations. And I'm, I'm just going to make a note because we do have about 50 people on the line. And just recognizing some of the names, I think many of you are on for the Climate Action Plan Study Fund Agenda Item. And I thank you for staying with us and I promise you that we will, that we will, that we will get there shortly. I think what we'd probably do, Tom and Michelle, is perhaps after the Police, Animal Control and Harbor Master budgets, perhaps we would take that Warren article up because I know there are many people who are interested in, so, so we'll, we'll do that. Keith, welcome. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Town Administrator. We're here tonight to discuss the, the budgets, as you mentioned, the three budgets, and hopefully it'll go rather quick. I like to use my acronym, the BLUF. So that's the bottom line upfront, for those of you who have not heard me give this annual budget report. I'm looking to get a negative 7.6% on Veteran Services. So, end slide, please. No. That should be no questions at all, right? So, we will go through the services though. As you can see, we provide assistance and advocate for all the town's veterans. We provide the direct emergency financial assistance to veterans in need, coordinate all the ceremonies, manage the townwide flag notification alert system, which is really working well these days, up and running. As you can see, we're currently at half mass for the two Capitol Police Officers that were killed in Washington DC. Literally all I have to do is make an email alert. It goes out to the different departments and I have strategically placed helpers in those departments that assist with that because it would be a daunting task even just for me, which I've had to do on occasion, all 37, and it takes quite a bit of time. But, next slide, please. That's just a nice picture of our Veterans Day, which was virtual this year. Benchmark matrix. We are Commonwealth certified and compliant with Mass General Law, Chapter 115. Several years ago, you may remember, under the Brave Act, we are now required to be certified. The SOs have, I think it's 90 days referral and another 90 days to be certified through the state. So it's good to know that both, both myself and Lisa Potts, who's the Veterans Benefits Administrator, are certified under state regulations. Chapter 115, benefits paid. It's about 20 clients now totaling for the, this past fiscal year. It's about $144,000. Massachusetts Department of Veteran Services returns 75% of that, as many of you may know. And for those of you who do not, in real money, that's about just, just salt of $110,000 coming back our way for having those papers and forms processed in a timely manner. The state used to be, I can't remember when I started, over a decade ago, it was up to a year, if not longer. And I know Sue could back me up on that, before the state got around to paying us back that 75%. And now it's really with the computers and the Vismus system and knowing that smaller towns are struggling through, through revenue problems in order to provide these benefits. Those, the state is actually within the quarter. So we get those back within the quarter. So it's a lot of money. Massachusetts is still the only state in the nation that provides these benefits to veterans and their dependents. It's been done from the Great General Court since just after the Civil War. So it's a, a very proud to be part of that, that network. The federal claims are what we hear a lot on the news. So it's funny, we get a lot of calls. We are not the VA, which is the Veterans Affairs. But we manage those cases under our purview. We're supposed to provide assistance and support to veterans and widows to file cases. So the total amount of cases that we manage here in Hingham is 224. We bring in just south of a half a million dollars to the local community and the local economy. And the total average award monthly per person, if you break it down, is, is a little more than $2,000. Next slide, please. The key initiatives. So there's two funds in town that we manage, Veterans in Need and the Veterans Benefit Fund. Hingham was very instrumental in starting that. We had special legislation drawn up with our legislatures at the Great General Court. In 2012, we passed a Warren article that allowed us to use the stuffer. That's that small piece of paper that's in with your personal property tax quarterly and your annual excise tax. And it allowed us to let the public fund these, these initiatives for veterans that are in need. So the state took a look at that and through an act called the Home Act, the, that is now state law. So cities and towns can, through local option, pass at their own town meeting, town council, whatever they have, that same thing, that they realize that the gap between the state sometimes and the needs of those veterans is greater than the length of time. So in order to have access to a fund to allow immediate relief, they made that a law for the state. So I thought that was great that Hingham spearheaded that through that special legislation. We provide sports still to the Commander Paul Anderson House, six residents currently living there. We manage the town's consolidated flag purchase program, military ceremonies live and now virtually. This year, we were instrumental in setting up a, or renaming our Veteran of the Year Award to the Hank Maud Service Above Self Award. Hank was a World War II veteran who was on the Veterans Council for many years and he was our liaison to Lyndon Ponce. And quite a gentleman, if you never met him, one of the, I had the privilege and honor to work with him for many years. And I felt to do his family and his, his name, to keep that in perpetuity, that he was somebody that always strived to provide service above self. So this year's Wardee was Tom Burbank, for those of you who did not tune into the Veterans Day, which is when we typically announce that. Hingham High School still has the Veterans Appreciation Club. It's one of the largest clubs at the Hingham High School. They raise usually somewhere in the avenue of around $2,000 every year. They raise usually somewhere in the avenue of around two thousand dollars every year and they, they usually donate to a local charity, Veterans Charity Organization, anywhere between five hundred and twelve hundred dollars, depending on how they vote. So it's great to be part of that. I serve as the military liaison and I work with the Resource Officer, Tom Ford, and we're able to manage, it's about forty students that are in that club. Restore the town's military monuments and we're looking to do like a five-year plan, which started this summer. Because of COVID, we were out of Town Hall. We made the use of that time and I coordinated an effort with our town Historic Commission, Andrea Young, and we traveled around to all of the monuments that were listed on their register. Next slide, please. So the impacts. Most of the clientele, I'll say probably eighty percent is senior citizens, they're in their, their elders. Their mode of operation is to come in here, come in the office, talk to Lisa or I, present the papers personally. Quite drastic for them to have to put those papers. You know, they're originals. Sometimes I hear the word so many times, the, my, these are my originals, Keith. I go, okay, we'll get, we'll get them back to you. So increased postage because of that, a lot of copying, so increased man-hours and it's just hard for them to understand that, you know, to drop that in the box out front, eventually I'll get it, but it's not their normal way. So it's, it's hard for them. That also, we suspended that in-person intakes for all those federal claims that I just mentioned. So that half a million dollars that we bring into this, to the town of Hingham and the local economy was really thwarted by that. So people can do this online. It's very difficult. I would never recommend it. So to you, always try to use a VSO or a service officer to help you navigate the VA, very big bureaucracy, which, you know, it's tough to navigate. Veterans Council and G A R went virtual, so they're on the Zoom with posting as, as well as all, all other branches of this government. And the mandated bi-weekly working groups, I think was mentioned by, by, by just about everybody. I know Mary mentioned it at the very beginning. So in order to fulfill the mission, it, it increased the workload. So seemingly enough, it would, it would almost seem like because of some of those things that I mentioned, where people aren't coming through the door, there was almost a lull. But the workload actually increased because from working from home, I, I noticed that people would call or email all different times, day and night. So it just sort of stretched the work week out with no end. So that was a, a little change that we had to get used to, but it's still, it's working well. Next slide, please. Is that it? That's it for that budget. Oh, so staff, staff salaries and expenses. So we have one full-time, that's myself, one part-time person, who I mentioned, Lisa Potts, the Benefits Clerk. The expenses, the major items that we have for, for expenses, obviously, are the Veterans Benefits. Wreaths, repair, maintenance, things like that are very, very small. I only own a very small percentage of that budget. Next slide. So about, you can see here that thirty thousand dollars goes out as ordinary benefits. So what we call ordinary benefits, to break that down for you, is it's a monthly financial aid to those people. Those people make, people that are on Mass General Law, Chapter 115 program, typically are within the two hundred, two hundred percent below the federal poverty line. So they live in, they're living well below their means. Like I said, we have about twenty clients now. The average monthly request is about twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's split up between those twenty people. Some people get perhaps eight or nine hundred dollars, and then there's one person that I know gets forty-five. So it's kind of like a stipend and it's income-driven or means-driven. It's to provide them that extra support. Most of our money, as I've heard some of the other department heads speak of, right, is medical attention supplies, medical supplies and medical insurance continually climbs. Right now, we have twelve clients on our group Blue Cross Blue Shield policy. But as you can see here, the average monthly request that we send out is close to twelve thousand dollars. Some of the examples below, burials, fuel assistance, eyeglasses, hearing aids. Some things that you wouldn't think of are covered under there as well. The twenty-five hundred dollar miscellaneous item, again, that's part of Mass General Law. It says that the town must decorate the graves of veterans, the three weeks preceding Memorial Day every year. And just as with everything else that I mentioned, all of those items separately are all returned back at a seventy-five percent rate. Next slide.
The next is G A R Hall.
So any questions on any of that?
Joe, any questions for Keith?
No, Keith, it's just incredible what you've accomplished and are continuing to accomplish for the town and for veterans. I've got no questions on the budget.
Thank you.
Bill?
Keith, yeah, great job as always. Thank you for what you do. On, on the, on the Valor Act Tax Workout Program, when I was on the council, I helped to create that initiative, as you may remember, worked together on it. We only have five people of the authorized ten.
Correct, yes. Well, there's five on there now. Currently, the, this was an issue early on, so this may, you know, I think, I don't know if I add this on that COVID slide, maybe I should have. But because of the inability for those volunteers, which we rely on a lot, to get into Town Hall, it's going to really hamstring them come the end of the year, the end of this fiscal year. So the typical exemption for working in excess of a hundred hours here in the Department of Veteran Services is equal to about a fifteen hundred dollar exemption from their personal property tax at the end of the year in the fourth quarter. So there's currently, one, two, there's currently three, three clients who will not be getting any of that this year. There's two clients that work online or off-site already. So they weren't even impacted. The people that were physically here were, were gonna, are gonna feel it the most.
Okay, thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions on the Veterans Services budget? Okay, seeing none, Keith, you're going to run us through G A R Hall.
So G A R Hall is managed by the Board of Trustees. They're appointed, it's a three-member board appointed by, by the Board of Selectmen to take care of this one hundred and thirty-two-year-old historic museum that memorializes our town's service and veterans dating back as far as the Civil War. And actually, there is a few, a few pieces in there from the Revolutionary War. The self-guided tours on the first and third Saturdays monthly, obviously closed due to the COVID-19 protocols within the state, so that building has not been used since last spring. Serves, so this next thing as well, where it served the functional groups, Boy Scouts of America, Hingham Police Department, Fifty Flags Program, Militia, D A B, Legion, V F W, all of these organizations basically had to find a new home. We did not host the Hingham High School Sophomore Class Annual History Day event this year, but we're looking forward to a brighter future. We'll see what this year will bring. The budget expenses, the biggest expense that you can, you can imagine with a one hundred and thirty-two-year-old building is the maintenance and grounds. The utilities is almost equal to what we pay just to maintain the building. Next slide.
So, Joe, any questions on G A R?
None, no questions. Thank you.
Bill? I, I would just note that there are a number of volunteers, including the appointed trustees, who donate a lot of time, as does Keith, as does Lisa Potts, as does Lisa German, on the upkeep of this wonderful facility. And I, I think if, if the town were to have to fund all of the work and the number of hours that all of you contribute, this budget would probably be five or ten times greater than what it is.
Quite true, Mary.
And then Keith, celebrations?
Celebrations, fiscal '22 budget is, we're looking at seventeen thousand, one hundred and seven. The direct oversight that I have is thirteen thousand, three, five, seven of that. The remaining balance is for Fourth of July, first responder details. I don't believe that was used last year. I don't have it in front of me. Sue might know off the top of her head, but I think without the parade, that was not even used. Funds. So funds, annual mulching, floral plantings, wreath placing, that's the decorations that I was talking about of the twenty-one military monuments and memorials. That's part of Memorial Day. That's a big cost. We, we pride ourselves on putting the live wreaths out there and I think it does, it does show. There are other cities and towns within the Commonwealth that use like a floral arrangement, like a fake type wreath. It's not, it's really not as appealing. I think we really show that we care about our veterans and our, our memorials. Metal grave markers are still being produced as well to those veterans who pass away in our town. And as I mentioned, each grave is flagged. The annual ceremonies, National Peace Officers Memorial Day, Memorial Day and Veterans Day Observers, Battle of Grape Island commemoration, which was again, one of the things that was canceled altogether this year, as was the Fourth of July Parade. P O W, M I A, National Recognition Day, we did have. We were safely outside, following the protocols. I know I was away on military duty, but I know several of you who were there. And I'd just like to point out that for the last three years, we've also been actively engaged in relocating our memorial due to all the work that's going down at the harbor with Harbor Development Committee, the 3A Task Force. There's a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts down there. And we had decided and took advantage of moving our P O W and M I A memorial. D P W has worked to get the headstone over there, private donations paid for the flagpole. We do have the flag up. And it looks great there. And I just wanted to say why I'm stopping on this particular thing. I think it, it bears note. Michelle was very very instrumental in getting that Whitney Wharf lit. So through some sort of grant that she found, I don't know how she found it, but she was able to find some money down there and the eighth, the eight beautifully lit streetlights. So there's similar streetlights too that are on North Street, those old antique-looking streetlights, light that monument up at night and it's such a pride, a source of pride for me. Whenever I'm traveling on 3A and I come around that corner and it's, it really stands out. It's a beautiful sight. And I wanted to just thank her publicly too for, for doing that because those had been out for quite some time, for many years. So great job, Michelle, on that. Seaman Herbert Foss, because the ferry has been shut down, it actually impeded our access to our site. So we simply laid a wreath this year at, at the grave site on Fort Hill Street, which we had done many years ago. We had shifted that to the ferry terminal, but with the ferry being shut down, we were unable to get in there this year.
Joe, any questions for Keith on celebrations?
Nope. Thank you.
Bill? Members of the public, questions on celebrations?
Mary, can I just chime in just for a quick sec?
Please.
So I just wanted to point out, so we talk a lot in town about social work and, and the importance of it. In many aspects of what we do with regard to social work in town and working with our most vulnerable citizens, Senior Chief German is right at the forefront of that effort. He advocates constantly and loudly and appropriately for them. And, and unapologetically, I might add, as, as he should. So I just appreciate so much that he's able to stay in front of me and stay in front of the people that he needs to be in front of to get things done that need to get done. So Keith, thank you on their behalf and great job.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah. I was, I was at the State House, I think it was, I, I was at the State House for an event and that the Cabinet Secretary said, when I met him, he said, you have the best VSO in the whole Commonwealth. And I said, absolutely. And, you know, Keith, we've, we've talked a lot tonight about how, you know, COVID has interrupted things and, and you touched on it, which is that the, the personal connection that you and Lisa make to people is so important. And, and for many people, when they come in to see you, you're the only person they have contact with during the day. And, and they trust you and they're, and they're trusting you with their benefits, which is, you know, that, that they're putting a lot of trust in you. And, and I appreciate that you and Lisa have been sensitive to not just the transactional adjustment that's come with COVID, but the loss of human connection for people who really need it. And you, you and Lisa together have found ways to stay in touch with people to make sure that things like Memorial Day and Veterans Day still happen. And, and that we, that we let our veterans know that we remember. We remember the sacrifice. We, we value the contributions and you know, again, it's, you've had to sort of pivot in terms of how you make those connections. But I think it, it, it's just another reason why we do have the best VSO in the whole Commonwealth. And so please extend our appreciation to Lisa, to members of the Veterans Council. But none of it would be possible without your leadership. So many thanks to you as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so I have, it's, it's about nine twenty-six. Tom, I think what I'd just like to do if, if Chief Murphy and interim Chief Jones would, would bear with us, we have a, what I think is a procedural vote this evening on a Climate Action Plan Warren Article. And seeing that we have forty-eight people on the line, and I know many are interested, I, I think I would just like to speak to this. And but before we talk about this, I just want to let people know, this is not a hearing on the Warren Article. That's coming. That's coming. And the Advisory Committee will have a hearing. This is actually a procedural vote that the Board will make on whether to insert a Warren Article. And so our, our conversation is going to be a little bit focused tonight on that. And to that end, Tom, I think I'm supposed to introduce Brad Moyer. Is that what you'd like me to do?
Brad is here and queued up and ready to go.
Okay, so Brad Moyer is the Chair of our Energy Action Committee. Brad has also been an integral part of the Climate Action Task Force. So Brad, if, if you could perhaps start by introducing the other members of your task force and then just talking about the work that you did and introducing what I believe are two Warren Articles that the Board will consider for insertion into the warrant.
Correct, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Brad, if you could also just give your address for the record.
Oh, yes.
That would be great.
Of course. So Brad Moyer, twenty-three Colonial Road. So thank you, Chair Power and the other Selectmen for welcoming us, welcoming us this evening. Kathy Reardon and Maria Zaid, who are members of the Task Force, are joining me this evening. So what I'll do is I'll go over a brief bit of history of the Task Force, cover our work, and then the subject of the Warren Articles, and be happy to answer any questions at that time. So as the Selectmen well recall, the Energy Action Committee had put forward a Warren Article to discuss a climate action goal and a committee for forming it. That article was retracted in the spring earlier that year, following consultation with the Selectmen and Advisory Committee to go one level deeper in preparation for planning and asking for possible requisition of funds. And a task force was formed under the leadership of Tom Mayo, constituted with the members that we discussed. Also, Mary Savage Dunham was very instrumental and helpful in leading us along. So we're very sorry to have lost her to Florida. But I wanted to certainly let you know that she did a great job and her help was welcome. And also Brooks Winner of M A P C, who is a consultant hired under Tom to assist us with the Climate Action Planning Effort. So we kicked that off on a little bit of delayed basis. Uh, to assist us with the, uh, climate action planning effort. So we kicked that off on a little bit of delayed basis because of COVID. As we were all delayed, uh, in the September, October timeframe. We had, we met weekly, uh, and had a public workshop session where we invited members of the community. Uh, to take part in providing input on various goals. Um, and objectives that we wanted, things that they thought should be considered for a climate action plan. Um, and got a great amount of feedback on that. So the, uh, work product, uh, that we produced. Was a recommendation to go to town meeting, uh, with two warrant articles. One that, uh, simply asked for requisition of funds to undertake a climate action planning effort. Uh, that would address a goal of achieving net neutrality by twenty forty or another target that's deemed feasible. Uh, and Mary, I don't know if it would be helpful. Do you want me to read the actual language of the article? Do you have it in front of you? What would you like, what prefer?
Yeah, you know, you know what, Brad? I think maybe for, um, for people on the, on the call, and I know that John Coughlin made a few edits. Do you have his version?
I do. I've heard them and they look fine to us and shared them with the rest of, uh, task force as well.
Why don't you go ahead and read this, this first article, which is the appropriation of funding to complete the work?
Absolutely. Uh, so the article reads, will the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds? A sum of money to be spent by the town for purposes of creating a climate action plan. Which will evaluate a wide, wide range of carbon emission reduction strategies. And propose measures within the town of Hingham to achieve a zero sum of carbon emissions produced. And taken out of the atmosphere, open print quote, net zero close print. By the year twenty forty or another target deemed feasible or act on anything related there too. So let me break down a little bit what that article is intending to accomplish. So of course, the money shot is the money. Um, so we're looking for money to, uh. Hire essentially expertise to help us put together this climate action plan. So. You'll notice that the amount is not specified at this point in time. Uh, we had been working under, uh, a, a planning amount, an approximating fifty thousand dollars. Uh, N M A P C had put together a plan for us or, you know, a work plan of what those dollars would accomplish. Why that amount is still TBD is, uh, there's more opportunity for work to be done there in two ways. One is we've been in consultation with, uh, and looking at other towns that have undertaken this effort. Um, and believe there's some learnings there about amounts that they have spent. And perhaps that can inform what Hingham should undertake. The other is that HMLP, following the sale of S-Rex. Uh, earlier this year and the acquisition of other S-Rex. Netted a certain sum of money and they would be willing to, uh, put funds towards this effort. Um, I spoke with Paul Hayno, Director of the Light Plant yesterday on that point. Uh, and he expressed that he is fine with me representing that to the selectmen this evening. Uh, so the amount of funds that HMLP will expend, whether that would cover some or all of the costs. Is still to be determined and that's also influencing why we haven't yet specified a final dollar figure. We figure that final dollar figure could come in the next month or two as we work the article through with, uh, further discussions with selectmen. As well as advisory. And so we'll have a, a dollar amount at, at some point on that.
And, and Brad, I would just add that, um, it's a typical town practice when we put together a warrant article. To not put the amount of money in the warrant article, to save it for the recommended motion, because once the warrants closed. If that number changes, you have to open the warrant. Um, if the number goes up. It's, it's potentially a change in scope. So it's our common practice with any appropriation article. To use the, the language that you read and then have the recommended motion. Um, i- indicate the dollar amount. So that, that's actually going to work very well.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Uh, so then there are, are two other things that I want to unpack with the article that we put forward. Um, the next is, you know, carbon reduction strategies and measures within the town of Hingham. So. Um, where the Energy Action Committee's remit is largely municipal energy focused. This climate action plan is going to cover all of carbon emissions within the borders of Hingham. So it needs to target. Not only municipal, but it needs to target the residential sector, um, the business sector and even transportation. So travel in and through Hingham. Uh, so it's again, one of the reasons we needed to undergo this effort. Because of the broad remit, uh, of that. And then lastly is the. Idea of net neutrality be by twenty forty as a goal or another target deemed feasible. And that language is key. Because while the, um, net zero by twenty forty was the most favored objective. Following input from the public, um, we understand that a climate planning, action planning effort, you know. Needs to take steps to achieve that. There's a lot that will happen in the ensuing, you know, nineteen years. Getting us to twenty forty. Uh, new technologies are developed. Think about where we are today compared to where we were, uh, at, you know, the year two thousand. Uh, much has changed since then. So the climate action plan, while having that as a goal or a target. During the development may determine that other targets are also, uh, more feasible. Or might take it on an incremental approach, say perhaps plan out the next five years. And then in five years, plan again for what's feasible in the subsequent five years, which is a, a, a not uncommon approach taken by other bodies. So we wanted to make sure that the town was aware, that's the goal, that's the input that we're working towards. But the planning effort could yield another target based on the results of the study, uh, taken with the funds.
Okay. Um, and then, you know, Brad, I think some of this might be co-mingled. So. Perhaps you could speak to the other warrant article and then I could open it up to, uh, questions and comments.
Certainly. Uh, so I like before, I'll read that article very quickly and then we can unpack it. So the second article is, will the town vote to establish a climate action planning committee charged with establishing a climate action plan? With such committee consisting of twelve members determined as follows. One member of the Energy Action Committee who shall serve as Chair of the Climate Action Planning Committee. One member of the Clean Green of Hingham, one member of the School Committee or its designee. One member of the Hingham Municipal Light Plant, one member of the Planning Board or its designee. One member of the Conservation Committee, one member of the Weir River Estuary Committee. One member of the Development Industrial Commission, each of the above to be selected by the respective committee. And four residents to selected by the Board of Selectment and to selected by the moderator or act on anything related there too. Um, so the setup of this may sound somewhat familiar as it mirrors what was done for the master plan effort. Um, so we had the vote for the funds to establish master plan and then, uh, a committee to oversee. The, uh, design of that plan. So we mirrored that approach and the reasons we, uh, targeted the membership that we did. Is again, getting back to a point I made in the previous article, whereas the Energy Action Committee is focused on municipal. This body would focus on townwide. So we need to make sure that all constituents are represented and have a voice. In the committee membership itself. So the committees that we identified are. Other committees in the town of Hingham that, uh, through their own work or their missions have invested interest in this, uh, planning process. Or are otherwise impacted by the planning process. So for example, we wanted the Development Industrial Commission represented. Because the business sector, uh, will be impacted and we, we see that as, as a body that could help provide a voice for that group. Um, and I could go through each of these to, to point that out. Uh, but the last I'll say too is then the four residents at large to make sure that. Uh, citizens who, uh, want to have a voice in this or, you know, have a beneficial voice. Because they represent a group that will be impacted, but maybe isn't completely served by the committee structure we already have set up. We have that ability for the selectman and the moderator to identify those individuals and, and add them to the committee. And then the purpose of that committee would be to oversee the work of the consulting firm or whatever expert we bring in with the funds requisitioned. To oversee the planning process.
Um, Brad, just a, a question for you, you know, with respect to like twelve members and, and the composition and things is. I- is this, you know, is this comparable to what, how other c- communities have done this or, you know. Um, or, or was it pretty much kind of modeled after the construct of the master plan committee?
Yeah, so it was largely modeled after the construct of the master plan, but not because we haven't looked at other communities. It's just, there's a wide variety of, of approaches. Some of them keep it completely within the selectmen. Others, uh, have an all volunteer committee that was purely just volunteer and not constituted by a town vote. Others where it's constituted by a town vote and some other towns have, uh, dedicated, uh, employees like sustainability managers or so forth. Who are charged with running with this. So you really had a, had a broad array of possibilities here. So we focused on what Hingham has done before, what has worked well for Hingham and what we thought would work well for us.
Uh, thank you. Um, Joe, uh, questions for Brad about either of the articles?
I, I do. Thank you. Um, let me make sure, um, I am unmuted, aren't I? Yes.
You're unmuted.
First, just a correction. There was a reference, I, I think in the second article to, to the Conservation Committee. It's actually the Conservation Commission. So the, uh.
Ah, great. Thank you.
I, I think that was, uh. I'm not sure where that was. Um, and, uh, I. Um, I fully support, uh, what's going on. Just, just so you know, part of. What your Board of Selectmen hasn't been involved with recently is doing what we can to keep the MBTA. From eliminating or significantly curtailing, um, the ferry service and train service. And part of the justification that we have advanced is that it, that is the antithesis of what we need. To maintain and manage our climate. Uh, and that the impact of having more cars on the road because of. Reduced transportation services by the state will be, have extreme consequences, not just for Hingham, but you know, for the entire. Three ninety-three corridor, uh, and the state. So we've been fighting that battle, uh, with respect to the MBTA. And I'm, I'm glad that the town is pursuing this as well. Um. One of the distinctions that I noticed. Um, is that the state has the, I believe their, um, emission standard, their, their goal is for twenty fifty. And what's being proposed is, is for the year twenty forty. And I'm wondering to what extent there's been discussion about that ten-year gap.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So there's a lot of pressure on that number twenty fifty right now. There is, um. You'll, if you follow what's happened on the international stage, you look at what's happening, um, you know, with the Paris Accords and so forth. There's the back chatter is the concern that. We're not moving as quickly as we should be to meet what were previously identified as targets necessary to achieve a twenty fifty timeframe. Um, and that number twenty forty or twenty forty-five areas permutations thereof. Are continually being thrown out as if we don't move faster, we're going to need to target those. So since we are at the start of this process, rather than be caught on the back foot. By engaging an effort in twenty fifty and a couple of years into it, the international consensus saying, uh-oh, we now need to move up to twenty forty. Cause the rest of the planet isn't moving fast enough. We wanted to put that number out front and center so that we're focused. On that. And if we can achieve it, we can achieve it. We'll take twenty forty-five, you know, but, um, or whatever it is. But since that's where the consensus is moving, we wanted to be out front and, and say Hingham can be a leader in this area.
How, how do we move the state from twenty fifty to twenty forty?
Uh, that is a great question, you know, so I don't have an answer for you on that. Um, one thing we can take comfort is with that roadmap bill. Um, the, you know, original author, Joe Moschino is who are rep, uh, with whom we are, are in regular contact. Uh, so one will always work with her. Uh, two is the, the roadmap bill itself, while it's targeting twenty fifty. Um, it is clever enough to realize that that's still thirty years away. Uh, and that there's opportunities to move that number forward by tackling items in kind of like an incremental approach as well. So even though the goal is stated as twenty fifty, um, if we, if that number, the science is that number needs to be moved up earlier. I think the state can be flexible enough to move forward with that.
Great. Brad, thank you very much. Really appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely. No, my pleasure.
Uh, Bill, uh, questions about the warrant articles?
Sorry, my video, uh, my video was lost, but you know, I think this is a wonderful first step. In addressing this, uh, very important issue. And Brad, thank you for, for your work. Um. I think this is a, a great article. I'm looking forward to supporting it. Just, I, just two quick comments. Uh, first of all, I'm. I'm thrilled to hear that HMLP is gonna, um, help us with the cost. I think that's, that's great news. And, um, I, I like the fact, Brad, that you want to, um, uh, include as many people from as many backgrounds as possible on the committee. I would just say, I, the committee may be a little large. Um, and I know the master plan is going well, but it, it's a very large committee. I've sat on some of those meetings. It ju- it just gets a little big. So, and you may want to think about, uh, the numbers a little bit. To allow the committee to be a little more efficient, but just thrilled that this is going forward and thank you for all your efforts.
No, no, my, my pleasure. And I want to, uh, I appreciate the, the kudos that seem to be directed towards me, but. I definitely want to say that this is a, a, a team effort. I want to thank Kathy and Maria for all their work as well as many members of the community that I see on here. Whether they're representatives of Hingham Net Zero or the Energy Action Committee or just interested persons. Um, there's a ground swell of support behind this and I just happen to be riding that wave at the moment. Uh, so kudos should not be directed towards me, but to everyone else who's here. So thank you.
Um, I'll just, I'll just jump in here. First of all, um, you know, and again, we're not having a hearing tonight. The decision is, does the board want to insert the warrant articles? Um, I support inserting the warrant articles. Um, and I think what you've heard is that both my colleagues support. Support inserting the warrant articles. Um, like Bill, um, and, and you know, I, I see Bill Reardon's on here. But Bill and I both served on the Advisory Committee. That's fifteen. And, and the bigger committees, you know, s- sometimes. You know, you have the benefit of, of, um, representation, but sometimes it's a little unwieldy and you also have to make sure that then you have a quorum. So you're going to need, you know, you're going to need a, you know, you're going to need a majority. What I would suggest is that, is that the article in its current construct, I think represents the biggest piece. We may find during the hearing process, you know, you, you can make an article smaller. You just can't make it bigger. So, you know, if we start out with twelve, we can't go to fifteen, but, but you could, um. You know, y- you could, for example, uh, go to eleven. Um. It is noteworthy to me that there are so many people on this call. And I think that that is indicative of, um. Of strong feelings within this community that, that Hingham needs to take action. And. I know that last year we were kind of trying to get organized and I think there was a lot of disappointment that we couldn't move at that time. Um, and at that time, I think we also said, hey. We're, we're going to do this in a way that we're ready for twenty twenty-two. And, and I think, I think we are. And, and I think that was a collective effort. Of, of engaged citizens, citizen volunteers, um, and town staff. So I, I think we're in a, we're in a good place to have this be, um, be considered by town meeting. Um, so at this point, I'm going to open this up to questions or comments, but in, in the interest of time, because we. Still have, um, miles to go before we sleep. Um, the, again, the decision tonight is whether the board wants to insert the warrant articles. So if, if I could ask that if anyone has a question or wishes to make a comment. On just this matter of inserting the warrant articles, um, I'd, I'd invite you to raise your hand and, and if recognized. Please give your name and address for the record. Okay, so I'm not seeing it, but I'm, I'm thinking, oh, okay, I see, I see Laura Burns. Hi, Laura.
Hi, good evening. Laura Burns, four seventy-nine Main Street. On the subject of inserting the article. Um, I am assuming that what you're talking about is inserting it as sponsored by the selectman. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just want to say that I don't, I don't see that as procedural. I see that as really, um, something very important. Given where we were a year ago and the disappointment that you referenced. Um, and the, the interest that you see of people here to have the selectman really take it on as yours and. And, uh, be the standard bearers, I think is really meaningful. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I apologize. I, I, if, if, if I was using the words procedural, I, I didn't want to imply this wasn't important to do or wasn't significant. I, um, I think the discussion of whether we should, you know, whether we should vote this, what are the pros and cons? I think that's a discussion for the public hearing when we get to that place. So, um, I, I agree completely and I appreciate your comments. Uh, anyone else? Okay, um, I have a motion, council for the town had sent a motion, which I will propose for my colleagues' consideration. I would like to make a motion to insert the attached warrant articles for funding of a climate action plan for the town of Hingham and to establish a climate action planning committee into the warrant for the town of Hingham 2021 annual town meeting.
Second.
Mary, can I just jump in real quick? So we're referencing the, the articles. Attorney Coffin is actually on the line and as the discussion was occurring, he updated the articles with a couple of grammatical and, and, and non-substantive changes. Now just make sure we're referencing those articles. It's Conservation Commission, Joe, stuff like that.
The attached warrant, the attached warrant articles as provided by town council. Would that be sufficient?
Right, yes.
Thank you, John. Okay. Do I get a second? Did someone second, Bill or Joe?
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to Brad in particular and Kathy and Maria, uh, members of the Energy Action Committee. And, and thank you all for, um, for, for being here tonight. You're still welcome to remain for the rest of our meeting. Tom, let me just ask you a procedural question while we're on the subject of warrant articles. Would you prefer that we take up the public safety design before the public safety budgets? Or would you prefer that we do those after?
Sorry, uh, we certainly can. I, I know Mr. Garrity is from the Public Safety Building Committee is on the line and I'm sure he would appreciate that.
Uh, Bill and Joe, would that be okay?
Yeah, fine with me.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah. So I'm gonna, I think, Tom, I'm gonna turn this over. I believe you and Joe and Bob Garrity, the Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, uh, are going to speak to this. Again, this is a vote about inserting a warrant article. Um, so, uh, I don't know who's going to lead off, Tom.
So, yeah, I, I will do it. Yep. Um, at some point, it might be beneficial, Michelle. If we could bring up maybe and share the, the, the warrant, uh, the article language, it's a, it's a pretty short article. While Michelle is doing that, I can speak to what's happening. So if you remember back in, uh, at town meeting in November, when the town was asked to vote to fund the purchase of the property at 335 Lincoln Street, part of that discussion was speaking, um, to the Public Safety Building Committee's, um, process in determining the, both the feasibility and the conceptual design efforts, uh, made by our architect over the prior months. And, um, those efforts resulted in our, um, our ability to tell the town that the, the site at 335 Lincoln Street was in fact, um, sufficient and, um, well feasible. Uh, and that a, uh, conceptual design, uh, certainly would work on that site. What this prob, what this article does is to allow the town to, um, to complete the, to move past the conceptual di, design into preliminary and ultimately final designs. And construct, and you know, get construction bids and, and owners, project managers and, and all the things that need to be done in order to get a true final design. So, uh, the conceptual design wasn't again intended to test the capacity of that site. And this, uh, the new final design would be, uh, one that would, um, that would place in the town's, uh, hands the information they would need in order to actually move forward with potentially funding the, uh, the development and building of a, of a joint public, um, safety facility. So, um, if you remember back in October, uh, the building committee did vote unanimously that in fact, the site was feasible and that that conceptual design proved that. So, uh, that was a major hurdle. So like I said, now, now this, this next step is to go out and get money to actually, to appropriate funds to actually, uh, go out and get a final design so that we know what, what we need. And then ask for the, the funds to actually build what it is we ultimately determine we need, which has not yet been determined. So I, I, like I said, Chairman Garrity of the Building Committee is online for questions, should anyone have any. But I'm also here and Selectman Fisher is the project's Selectman Liaison, so.
Joe, did you have anything that, that you wanted to add?
Well, um,
Introduction?
Sure. Uh, thank you. Uh, so this, this is the next step. This is not an article authorizing the construction of the project. It really is the next step so that we can figure out what it is, what is appropriate to build and what would be the costs to build it. And, uh, there's a question of timing. We heard a lot of comments at the last town meeting about the timing of this versus other projects in town. So this is, I think, a necessary step in order to put us in a position to weigh our options. We've, we've purchased the property, uh, and now we need to move forward and design the, uh, the building that, uh, we would be placing there.
Bob, I, uh, but before opening it up for questions, I didn't know if as Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, there was anything that you wanted to add at this time?
Oh, sure. Just a, just a little. The, um, I've reviewed the, the draft article and it's consistent with what we've been doing over the last couple of months and what we can, what we expected to continue to do over the next three or four months of a four-town meeting comes around. And that's basically to, uh, right now, we don't have any money to design the project. We don't have any money to, uh, have an owner's project manager, which is required by law to oversee the design of the project as well as the construction of the project. Uh, so, uh, the plan, our plan was, and I believe it was the Selectman's plan as well as Tom's, is, uh, that we would use the next couple of months to, uh, determine whether who the designer would be and whether we would continue the services of Castle Booz. We're in the process of, uh, doing some, uh, qualification reviews of their design and construction experience on some other comparable projects. In addition, we would be able to, uh, get the project where we have a hard number from them by, at the end of this, that process to, that would give us a very good handle on what the design cost would be for the entire project. We also are in the process of, uh, going now to procure proposals from owner's project managers. We hopefully within the month, we should be able to be out on the street with a, uh, proposal package to get interest from owner's project managers. And once we get a project manager, uh, we could negotiate what their fee would be, uh, to carry out the project. Now, both the design and construction and project manager contracts would obviously be, uh, subject to whatever town meeting's action is at the regular town meeting. But at least we would have, uh, good, solid numbers, uh, that we'd be going to the town on, on, uh, what the likely cost would be for the design and the construction of the project. So this is, this, the article, one shot of it, the article is, uh, consistent with, uh, what our plans were for spending our time over the next six months or so.
Go ahead, Joe.
I, I just gonna add that, um, the urgency of moving forward has not diminished. That the North Fire Station, uh, is not a facility that we want to continue. Uh, and I think our firefighters deserve, are moving forward to take this next step. Uh, the police department, uh, to move their headquarters there is important. And for our senior center, um, we need to get this project done in order to, to move the senior center. All of those, those, those three departments, uh, really warrant are moving forward to this next step.
Um, and just a, a question for, I'm, I'm not sure who, who this is for, but if town meeting were to authorize design funds in the spring of 2021, my understanding would be that the design work, that, that a request to town meeting for construction funds would happen in the fall of '22 at the earliest. Is, is that, is that still the thinking?
Uh, that, that would probably be, uh, that, that would definitely work. It's possible we could, uh, have it fully designed in time for, um, the 2022 regular town meeting. I'm not sure. That'd probably be pretty tight. That's part of the design on the project.
Yeah.
And I think if there was going to be a special town meeting in 2022, oh, yeah, 2022, that's probably the right time to ask for construction money if we get over the other, the previous hopes.
Yeah. I, I think that's the, the, that's the current thinking is that there would be a special town meeting for foster school in the fall of 2022. And the idea that both of these projects would be put forward to, to town meeting for their consideration at, at the same time. Bob, I, I don't know if the building committee has had a chance to talk about this, but I think in the lead up to town meeting, you got some questions and some feedback, I know from our board and perhaps from the advisory committee. I, I think what Castle Booz did in, in the feasibility was to, was to say that the site could support a, a facility that was up to 50,000 square feet. And I, I think, I think you heard in the process, I know you heard it from me, um, I think maybe a little from my colleagues about some questions about whether, whether we would need a facility of that size. And I just want to clarify that in this design phase, would I be correct in saying that we're not going to necessarily design a 50,000 square foot building? That there will be more work done to determine what size facility is appropriate? Would, would that be accurate?
Of course.
Okay.
So a little bit of the cloud clarifications, the, um, Castle Booz, Castle Booz didn't look at the site and said, how big a building can we build on that site? They did do a lot of programmatic information, uh, to, with the fire department, the police department to determine in order to carry out their program, the number of people they have and all the different services they provide and the different types of, uh, facilities they need. They determined that their conceptual take on it is that it would be about a 50,000 square foot building. Now, as a practice, what will likely happen is that will, that should, I believe, should come down square footage wise. I can't guarantee that, but usually at the, at the feasibility study phase, the designer will tend to have a higher amount just so that they won't, they won't be, uh, challenged later on saying, well, why are you going higher? It's, it's almost easy to go lower. And that's what our job would be to make sure, and the project manager, the project manager will be a big help here if we, if we get one of them on board in the future. But the, the project manager's job will be to continually look at the design and try to reduce it where it's appropriate, where to get it more efficient. And, and, and the designer would also have that objective too, because they want to stay on budget too, once we establish a budget. So, uh, if anything, I think the 50,000 is probably on the high side. It had escalation factors in there, both square footage wise as well as the hall was. And, you know, our, our job is to kind of hone that down and get it to be the right size of the building. We certainly have no intention of building, of building that's any bigger than it needs to be, put it that way.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, Bill, did you have any questions about this warrant article?
Want a clarification? So, um, the design that Castle Booz showed us and that we discussed in pretty good length, that, so that was, that design was simply part of the feasibility study? It wasn't, this is a whole separate, uh, I guess this is a whole separate part of this, um, action we're moving into?
So, Bill, I
Yeah, yeah. They called it a conceptual design.
Right, but it
They were hired to do a feasibility study and we are, we are asked to make sure that while we had to determine the approximate size of the building to make sure it could fit on the site. And therefore it was feasible to build a building that size on the site. But, but yes, the, the next phase is when they really get into design. And, uh, they, you know, they were really, you know, then they're talking, what's the equipment going to be? What's the, the sizes of the corridors, the width, you know, how can we combine this, uh, different, uh, space together, that type of information. So it becomes a real design that you can, you know, there'll be plans and specifications for each section of the work in increasing amount of detail until we get to the final design. You'll know every single, uh, everything that will be in that building.
Yeah, but Bill, we're not starting from scratch. Um, so the second phase is really building upon, and although building is not the right term, it's almost diminishing upon, uh, the, the original proposed, uh, proposed structure.
Yeah, the, the, the way it was, um, explained to me by John Coffin, which was very helpful, um, is a good way to think of it. I believe in John, correct me if I say something inappropriate here, but that this process, Bill, it brings us to, um, construction documents. So that we're, we're, we're ready to put things out to bid. That's, there, there's so much detail and, and flushing out of, of all of the, the, of what would actually be needed to build. It's more than just design, as you and I think of it. It's really, um, it's really all the work that goes into getting ready with, for construction documents.
Right. You, you have to start someplace. Okay. And they started, they bought the feasibility study and the conceptual design. It's the start of what's this building going to look like, sort of. And then that, the design is when they really test every, every single aspect of how big it should be, where they can, uh, have different savings in size and so.
Materials, the carpeting, the walls, the roof material, the engineering.
Right. And all that wants to know what the final cost is going to be as well as the size of the building.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, um, I, I think that's going to be important. I, um, as, as we move forward, I, I don't want to start to get into a discussion of the merits of the article right now. At this point, I just invite, if, if there's anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make, uh, a comment. Again, the, the, the topic under consideration is whether to insert the warrant article. There will be a, uh, if inserted, there will be a series of public hearings. Okay, seeing none, you know, I, um, I, I would just add that I, I think what Joe, what Joe appropriately pointed out is that the need to address these long-term facility deficiencies hasn't gone away. The town has been at this for several years. Finding an appropriate site, uh, was, um, very time consuming. And we're just very grateful to the citizens of Hingham for, um, authorizing the purchase of the land. At this year's town meeting, or you know, if I think about the last couple of town meetings, the citizens of Hingham have authorized, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of one, it's over a million dollars for feasibility study work for foster school, which is essentially, you know, the work to get through to the, to the construction documents, similar to what, what this is proposing. Um, and at the same time, I think there's going to be a warrant article i, to the tune of about a million dollars in, in the spring for the Plymouth River windows to round out the, uh, the money that the town's already set aside. So in, in the last, I don't know, year and a half or so, we've, we've committed, you know, somewhere around $3 million to make necessary and needed, um, address to make necessary and needed address facility issues at Foster School and Plymouth River. I think it's equally important to keep this project at play. And I would also point out that I think at this point, I don't envision, or at, at this point, I don't see any opposition to foster school. And, and you know, when there was opposition to East School, there was opposition to the middle school organized in both cases. And, and I have thought very carefully about a lot of the feedback that we've heard in the lead up during an after town meeting about how quickly we as a board should move on this. And, and obviously while that decision rests with the voters of Hingham, I, I would hate to see our board take action that both, that could both delay this very important project and could potentially had some adverse consequences on the town's consideration of foster school. So to me, this is keeping this project on a timetable where we'd have consideration of a couple of projects at the same time. One isn't going to jump in front of the other. And, and so after, after a lot of thought, and it was, it was not a slam dunk for me. I, I would agree with Joe that, that putting this forward for town meetings consideration feels like the right thing to do. Bill or Joe, I don't know if, if you had any additional comments to make before we vote.
No, I, well, I, I just, just briefly, and I really appreciate your, your comments there, Mary. That this is not an indication that we are prioritizing this project against or above certain other projects. This is an action to insert it, insert in the warrant article. And we really need to keep in mind that there are numerous projects. This is necessary in my view for our, our men and women at the fire department, the police department and the senior center. And we should not shirk our duty to support them.
Thank you. Bill, anything else to add?
Nothing.
Okay, John Coffin, we appreciate the vote language. I would like to make a motion to insert the attached warrant article for funding for the design and construction bid documents for the new public safety facility to be located at 335 Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts, into the warrant for the town of Hingham 2021 annual town meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. Bob, thank you very much for joining us this evening and thanks to you and the building committee for your continued work. Next on the agenda is the fire department budget. I'm going to turn it over to Fire Chief Steve Murphy. I know we also have Deputy LeChance present. Thank you for being here as well, deputy. And I think Michelle is, are you going to put something up on the screen?
Yes. I think Chief Murphy Zoom just crashed, but he'll be right back.
Oh, oh yeah, he's like frozen on mic.
He's been on all night and that's usually when it happens, right?
Chance, it's all you.
Been there for three years. About three hours.
Isn't it, isn't it the way?
It is every time. It's like I heard him come in. That's pretty funny.
Mary?
Yes.
I'm going to get up and walk. I'm, I can still hear, but I'm going to be out of vision here for a minute.
No, no problem.
We've been at it for almost four hours.
I know, I know. Chief Murphy, welcome back.
I bet you he's saying, oh gosh, right now.
Chief Murphy, if you would like to unmute, there we go. Thank you very much for-
Sorry about that, hopefully.
No worries. We, we got you back.
Okay, hopefully if I have to turn off my computer, I will, but I apologize for that for some reason. It's been, I've been able to turn the computer or the camera on and off all night and until you're about to call on me, it worked fine. And then it just crashed, so. But the good news is that, you know, Deputy LeChance and I had already discussed today on sharing the presentation like we normally do, even though we're on Zoom tonight and Deputy is actually going to start anyway, so he would have been able to pick up without me.
Okay, awesome. All right, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. So basically, our, our mission hasn't changed. Mission of the fire service is, is our core. It's what we're all about, to save and protect lives and property. 2020 added some new challenges for us that our folks handled very well and with professionalism. They really stepped up and they did a great job. Unfortunately, we did have to curtail some of what we normally do do, like our fights in our public education in the schools. Just in 2020, it just wasn't possible to do a lot of public outreach type of programs with everything going on with COVID. A big thing of what we, what we accomplished is our ambulance transports. You know, we do provide emergency medical services to the town. In a typical year, that does make up about 65 to 70% of what our call volume is. In 2020, our personnel transported over 1,700 to local hospitals. And kind of like the last bullet says, in a nutshell, we are a one-stop agency. When someone doesn't know what to do or who to call, they call the fire department, we show up and we fix their problem for them. Or find somebody who can. Well, call volume, it's interesting for the 20 years I can remember, our call volume goes up slightly every year. The exception to that was actually 2020. We did see a decrease in our call volume. Early on during COVID, there were less people on the roads during the shutdown, less people at work, which caused a decrease in the need for emergency services. So as you can see, our call volume and our ambulance transports were down slightly. We did respond to a total of 4,268 calls for service. 2,260 were for EMS or emergency medical services. And we did transport the 1,725 patients to local hospitals. Next slide, please. So this, this slide here, COVID impacts rose for the year. This was kind of a big deal for the fire department. I'm going to spend a few minutes on this slide. That's kind of why I breeze through the two previous slides, because this is going to take some time.
Actually, hang on Lou, I think you, Michelle, I think you jumped ahead too far in the slides. You should be.
I'm going to go to COVID first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I think it's, our order was a little bit different. Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. So COVID took our community by surprise and the members of the fire department went above and beyond what would have normally been expected of them. And I'm very proud of what the, the work they did. They did a great job. They stepped up. These men and women, they were exposed to this virus every day that they came into work. Some things that we had to change, things that affected us, we had to change procedures and guidelines. And when we made those changes, we had to remake those changes because the information was changing on a, you know, almost a minute by minute basis, we get new information. We changed the procedures, we changed the guidelines, which I'm sure members of the department were very frustrated at at times. But throughout the entire thing, they stayed professional, they stepped up and they did an amazing job. Our ambulance has transported over 1,000 patients during this time. Many of these patients did have and interestingly enough, any firefighters or any of our paramedics that tested positive for COVID. Until, I want to say it was the last week of December, first week in January, we had our first employee test positive, which really says a lot about what they did. They wore the PPE, the personal protective equipment, they followed the procedures. And like I said, they, they really did an amazing job. Everything they did was nothing less than amazing. Some other things we had go on throughout the year. So another less known function of the fire department is emergency management. We implemented a townwide IMT and the IMT is the incident management team. And it's made up of police, fire, town administration, border health, DPW, representatives from most of the departments around town. Basically what the team did, they facilitated all town functions that related to COVID. We held over 350 command group meetings. Sometimes two, three a day, seven days a week in the height of COVID. And a lot of what that did just facilitated everything. Everyone knew what was going on. There were no surprises. We had members of the Hingham Fire Department kind of step up and take some leadership roles. Captain Jeff Becker became a logistics officer for the town. So he, he's always been logistics for the fire department, purchasing our supplies. But now he was purchasing supplies for all the town departments relating to any COVID type of expenses. We were able to get reduced rates by buying in bulk and, you know, reducing any duplication of efforts with everything going through Captain Becker. That role is slightly changed as things are changing with the vaccine. So Captain Becker is now heading up a regional effort that involves the towns of Hingham, Cohasset, Hall, Noel and Situate. And that group is focused on getting the vaccine out to public safety, first responders, residents and other groups throughout the process. This week, we are vaccinating all public safety, Hingham Police, Hingham Fire, the dispatches of the Shrek. And in the coming weeks and months, different groups will be getting vaccinated at different times. And Captain Becker is heading up that front. Jim Sheehan, another member of the Hingham Fire Department, early on in COVID and throughout a good portion of it, he, he would develop a weekly incident action plan. And basically what that plan did is put everybody on the same page. It detailed all aspects of what needed to be accomplished dealing with the pandemic, like what our strategies were going to be, our objectives and in our tactics. Many people did a lot of work. They went above and beyond. I'm very proud of what the men and women of the Hingham Fire Department accomplished during this time. Very proud of what they did. They did a fantastic job. This was a difficult and trying year for a lot of us. But with the team we had in place, it really, I think it went very smooth. You know, working with Tom, Michelle, Susan Sarni, Chief Jones, Chief Murphy. The town's very fortunate. We had a very, very well-versed team. We did a lot of good things, made a lot of good changes. And I, I just, I'm, I'm very proud of the team that was put in place. And I think I'm going to pass off to Chief Murphy unless somebody has, anybody has any questions.
Thank you, deputy. Actually, can you go back to that slide for one second, Michelle? I got, there's one more bullet point that I want to talk about at the bottom. Thank you. All right. Thank you, deputy. And I absolutely have to echo exactly what the deputy just ended with, that our staff has done a fantastic job throughout this. And, you know, one thing to keep in mind, and I know that, you know, COVID has had impacts on everybody. And, you know, as the deputy just man, or just mentioned, the incident management command groups that we're having, you know, we went months, you know, with these seven days a week. Then at one point I thought we were doing well, we were down to about two per week or something else, and now we're ramping back up again. So, you know, this is, it's been a lot on all of us. But that being said, you know, many of us, myself included, were working remotely for many of this, you know, through this and all these different meetings and, you know, the stress on our staff that has been out there dealing with this on a daily basis has been very, very difficult for them, you know, so I do appreciate that. The last bullet point that's on this slide is that one thing that we have done once already, and we will be doing it again if we're successful, is that Sue Nickerson mentioned earlier tonight that the CARES Act in the town of Hingham was allotted $3 million to cover expenses related to COVID. Well, as soon as the disaster happened, then President Trump actually declared they COVID a presidential declaration. And under the FEMA Stafford Act, what that allows is that allows, and in this case he did it for all 50 states, but in our case, that allows us to apply for FEMA public assistance funding, which is different than the CARES Act. And in this particular case, it's been very limited. CARES Act actually has a much broader scope on what can, this money can be spent on. But there's some advantages for the town because of this PA declaration. Specifically, anything included under providing protective measures for COVID, which is really limited to public safety, police and fire, then we can request reimbursements in really three different categories. The first is any expenses, so material expenses. So anything that like the, you know, right there it says 51,900, that was what we spent up through, I think it was like October on PPE and decon, and that's just our department. That doesn't include the police department. That was all included as part of this FEMA request. We also actually are allowed to bill for equipment rates. So every single call that the fire department has responded to since COVID started, that's a COVID-related thing, we can actually charge for an equipment rate that FEMA determines. It's about $130 for the fire engines per hour, 190 for the quint every time they go. So we bill for that. And most importantly, they allow us to recoup overtime costs to maintain staffing levels. So what we have done is we submitted one request already for $867,000 and it's only reimbursable at 75% of the, you know, what that rate is. So that would potentially yield the town about $650,000 in return if everything is, is approved. Now that timeframe, and this is where it's, it's nice, and Sue Nickerson and Tom and Michelle and Lou and I have had discussions about this. There, what's the advantage of this is that unlike the CARES, there is no cap. So first of all, our timeframe on this actually goes back to January 20th. So anything from then until the end of the disaster is included in our expenses and there is no dollar cap. So FEMA and everyone else encourages us to use this as much as we can as our first opportunity, because we're not deleting from that $3 million town, you know, allotment. So if we get that allotment, this $867,000, that only includes time spent up until September 14th. So there's some money from FY4, or FY20, and there's some money from FY21 that would be included in that that would then get reimbursed to the town. If they're successful, and we submitted this back in October and they're still working on it. I was told today that FEMA is reviewing it and they're close to approving it. If we get that, then I plan on submitting another one as quickly as we can to get additional things. Because, you know, like I said, all of our overtime that, or not all of it, but probably about 95% of our overtime that we've spent for us and for, you know, police overtime to maintain their staffing levels is potentially eligible for 75% reimbursement. So it was a significant amount of work to do the applications. We had help from a lot of other people in town, but hopefully we're successful on that. All right, now you can go back one slide. Sorry, I think between your order and my order, we got, we got screwed up somehow.
Sorry about that.
All right. So this is kind of key initiatives, kind of almost a recap as well of some of the things that we did throughout this year. So one of our initiatives from the previous year is to fill some unfilled vacancies. We've been successful in doing that. We hired eight people that have been sent to the fire academy during COVID. They had to transition to virtual. They have all, one of them has another few weeks until he graduates. The others have all graduated. They're online now with us. We have, this will leave our department with one vacancy. But unfortunately, due to civil service not having a valid list because of COVID, we may have to wait a little bit on that. We had to transition many other things within our department. All of our mandatory EMS training had to transition online. And as Lou kind of went and discussed it, one of our goals, looking back at FY19 for FY20, was to increase our use of emergency management and our capabilities. I think we've practiced that a little bit, but we can obviously still continue to improve that and to apply some of the lessons that we've learned and continue working with the town to help the town and all of its residents respawn, recover and return to pre-COVID symptoms. One of the last things that I just want to comment on this, and Lou just, Deputy LeChance just mentioned it. Are, we currently have eight people that have been vaccinated within the fire department as vaccinators and they're ready to start doing that for other groups around town. We're going to increase that to about- And they're ready to start doing that for other groups around town. We're going to increase that to about another three. So they're ready to start going with this and to help kind of expand our role within the community. And to continue doing other things and you know, get back on track with some of the community risk reduction, everything else. Probably two slides from now. Okay, so budget stuff. Just one comment on the budget. We are still using a, our budget from the collective bargaining agreement that expired at the end of FY20. So if you look closely at our budget numbers, there's not a lot of big changes because there's no COLA changes. Or other contractual changes because the budget is, you know, already kind of postdated. So this is what we have. For the most part, our salaries and other things are pretty flat compared to where we were beforehand. A slight increase in the expenses, especially because we've been, you know, spending more on COVID related expenses. Specifically a lot of PPE and all that stuff, which we intend to probably, well, not intend to, but which we should be able to get reimbursed for. Next slide. Okay, so the one initiative that we are asking for, that we've asked for beforehand. Is for one additional firefighter paramedic. And to explain our request, let me give you, for those of you not familiar. Little bit of history on how we operate within the fire department and a little history on this particular item. So for the fire department, we have the three fire stations that are staffed between four different working groups. Those groups have anywhere from 11 to 13 firefighters assigned that work every single day. 11 is the minimum. That's the lowest amount that we can safely have. 13 is the maximum. The difference between the two of them is how many people can be on vacation or out sick before we have to hire someone on overtime. And unfortunately, you know, with this year with COVID, it has had an impact on that. We've had an increase in sick time. We've also had an increase in contact tracing. Because any of our members that became a contract tracer for someone even at home or someone through work had to be out. Or there were a few cases where we had someone that their significant other became a contract racer. And we're told to quarantine and the, our staff couldn't work from home. So they kind of had to work through that. So we've definitely had an increase in our overtime this year. We understand that. Hopefully we can get reimbursed by the, you know, the PA submission. But one of the things that we're requesting this money for is that if you look back on the history within our department. Back before the 2008, 2009 budget recession. Our maximum then was at 14 firefighters and our minimum was at 11. So that meant that we had three people that could be out on every shift before we had to hire someone on overtime. Since then, we went down to 12. We lost four off of the top end. And my predecessors have been working as I have to get that back to that 14. So we were funded with a new firefighter paramedic. I think it was an FY19. To bring us up so that all of our four shifts or four groups, as we call them, are all equal at 13 firefighters. But we still think that the right number for our mix is probably at that 14 to allow a little bit more flexibility when someone's out. Before we have to hire someone on overtime. And like I said, that could be for an injury or sick time or whatever the, or vacation time or whatever the case. So that's why we're continuing to request this. And we just think that that will help to, you know, actually offset our overtime, even though it would be an increase in our, you know, salary expenses and another item. But you know, instead of paying that person to work on overtime, would be paying them to work on a regular salary basis. So. And I think that's all I tried to, sorry if I talk fast. I'm trying to get through this. I know it's a long night for everyone. I talk fast anyways. So any questions?
Could, could you just, could you speak to, you, you mentioned about the academy, but I think that that's also, you know, bears repeating, which is. You know, if, if, if we want to hire a firefighter, you know, we can't, you know, there's, there's, there's time involved in that. Could you just kind of give an overview of, you know, let, let's say that a position is authorized. What, what happens and when does that authorized position, you know, come online?
Yep, sure. So there's actually a few of the different things that kind of flow into that. So the first one is actually, we are part of the civil service system. And so sometimes there's restrictions based on civil service. So I mentioned it already that because of COVID, they were supposed to have a new entry level firefighter exam back in April. They still have not completed that process yet. Which means that the exam that was out there for the previous list that we have to hire from is pretty much extinguished. And there's really no candidates left on it because that list has been out there for two and a half years. So even if we wanted to hire someone right now, it would be difficult for us to do that. And we probably would not get a very good candidate. So we, we kind of held off on that. We know we have one vacancy right now. We have one anticipated vacancy at the end of February with a retirement. So normally we would start hiring for those, but we haven't been able to. But once we decide to hire someone, then it takes about a year to actually get them through the system. Between getting them through the civil service, you know, as part of it, the background checks, the medical checks. Get them everything through, then to apply for a spot at the fire academy, which is a free academy for us. We don't have to pay to send them there, except for their salary. And then to get into the waiting list and for them to attend the program, which is a 10 week program. And then to get them back to the department, do additional training that we need. That takes a year or sometimes as long as 14 months from start to finish. And it's, you know, something we've tried to speed up, but we're limited by a lot of other factors that are outside of the department.
And two other questions before turning it over to my colleagues. You know, overtime, I just want to, you know, maybe ask you to explain. So you've talked about how, you know, sometimes overtime is needed. When, you know, someone calls in sick or someone is injured and they can't be on the job. But can you talk about how you also use overtime to? You'll be able to explain this better than I can, but you know, there, there are, you know, with increased call volume and things. Overtime in some ways is a tool that you use to. To address staffing issues short of bringing somebody on with salary benefits, et cetera. In other words, your overtime is never going to go to zero.
Yeah.
I, I just wondered if you could maybe speak to how, how you use and how you manage the overtime in your, in your department. Cause it's a big number.
It is a big number. And there's actually other numbers that relate to overtime that are in different line items as well. So there's a few different things. So the first thing that you're referring to is we have what's called callback. It's a separate line item in our budget. And what that allows us to do is if we had multiple calls going on at the same time. Or we had a large incident, especially one that was going to take a long time. Then we will put out what's called a callback and we, you know, page out through text messaging. And then anyone that's available can come back in to either supplement our staff. Or to put an extra ambulance or an extra fire engine in service or whatever the case. So that's the first kind of thing that that pays out in an overtime rate. But we think that's fantastic because then that prevents us from having a higher minimum staffing level or anything. If we can get these people to come in when needed. The second part of overtime is actually training. So our training, some of it we can do on duty, but most of it we can't, especially a lot of the mandatory hospital training that we have to do. And so, you know, sometimes the individuals will take it while they're on duty, but we have to give them release time. Meaning that they can't go and sit through an eight hour class while they're working on the ambulance or anything else. It wouldn't happen. So we pay someone else to cover them while they go to the training class. Or, you know, we will pay them overtime if they're on the off duty time to attend these training classes. So that's kind of this, you know, the same thing that, you know, they're still overtime. But the main category of overtime for us encompasses really a bunch of different things. The, the lesser categories are, it covers things like our meetings. And it covers, we have our own mechanics and they will do work on the engines. Their, their firefighters are actually, one of them's a lieutenant, one of them's a firefighter and they'll work on them while they're on shift. But occasionally they have to come in, especially if it's a more complicated thing, that they'll come in on their days off. And then they'll work on overtime to repair our vehicles. So we have things like that that are lesser things, meetings and all that stuff. Normally those meetings and outside work of non-staffing overtime is not substantial. But with COVID, it, it really has. And you know, deputy just referred to it. You know, when I have, at one point, we probably had about four or five different members of our department. Working on different groups, whether it was the restaurant reopening group or some of these other things. And you know, they're all hourly employees. So if they're doing it while they're on duty, great. Then you know, we're kind of getting two things out of them in a sense. But if they're doing that time from their home or coming in for these things, then we have to pay them overtime. So this year that was substantial on some of these meetings that these, you know, some of our staff put in extensive amounts of time and effort. To helping to, you know, to kind of deal with some of these problems. So they got paid overtime. Now, the good news about that is that no matter how you look at it, whether it's through the PA grant or through the CARES Act. We should be able to be eligible for reimbursement for that because those are CARES related type of expenses or COVID related expenses. And then finally, the biggest by far category is our overtime to maintain our shift staff, shift staffing. And like I said, we have to have a number of people working. And whenever we drop below that, then we risk having to take an ambulance out of service or take a fire engine out of service or anything else. And it varies for many different things. We currently have someone that's activated with the National Guard. He's been on a deployment since, I want to say it was back in sometime this summer. And we're going to lose him for 10 months total, you know. So we basically, that's almost like we took him off of the top end of our maximums. So whatever group he was assigned to is already down to 12 people. So if one person is out, then we can manage. But with two people out, one person on vacation, one person out on an injury, we have to hire in that group. So we kind of lost a firefighter. We also had another firefighter that is part of a FEMA team and it's a similar thing to the National Guard. He's gotten activated at least twice, if not three times that I can remember for COVID related things. Most recently, he was just in California for a few weeks, you know, helping work out there. So these are all things that affect it and we still have to maintain our minimum levels. So.
Thank you. And one final question. I noticed that you're repairing maintenance on buildings. It's been steadily increasing and it's one of the drivers of your expense increase for this year. But I'd also note that your total budget increase is 0.9%. Not 9%, 0.9%. Is, is that, is that the North Station or is it, is it other stuff?
It's a little bit of all three stations. You know, one of the things that I know, and obviously we're very appreciative of the, you know, effort by the town on the North Station. But you know, best case scenario, we're still talking a few years before we'd be able to move into that facility. And unfortunately, I think we, some of the problems that we're starting to face are really starting to tip us to the point. That we can't say we can wait for five more years or anything else. So you know, we, as you know, we had the mold issue. That is actually, the work is ongoing right now and it should be completed by the end of next week. So you know, that's moving towards it, but it's just, it's some other things, you know, especially with station one. The building is 10 years old now since its renovation. And there's a lot of other things that, you know, expenses that need to be done. Like that building has a lot of smoke detectors and fire and, you know, carbon monoxide detectors all throughout. They have a 10 year lifespan. With a fire station, we can't not go and, you know, replace the smoke detectors in our own building or anything. And you know, it's just different costs like that, that that building has a lot more LED lights or not LED there. Some of them are halogen lights or something else. And you know, they're, they're not LED, but they're lesser quality. But they're not lasting as long as, you know, we would hope to. So we have to replace some of the lights on the apparatus floor. We have to replace some other things. So our, our station maintenance is a, a big ticket item for us.
Thank you. Joe, questions for the chief or the deputy?
Yes, chief, deputy, I mean, thank you for the presentation and thanks for you and your department's work. It's outstanding. I had a question about your, your wage line. Did I hear you say that there is no cost of living increase in your budget?
For most of the staff, yes. So our, the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters' union, which covers. 52 of our 57 total members, that expired at the end of FY20. So there has, you know, this next year does not have any COLA increases, no other contractual increases or anything like that included into it.
But it, at some point, there will be a, a new contract and most likely there will be. COLA increases associated with that. Wouldn't it be prudent for us to put in something in our budget?
So Sue Nickerson usually includes that in, I believe it's article four.
So article four. Article, article four has allowances for collective bargaining agreements that haven't been settled.
Okay. So that's why it's not here.
That's, that's right. So if you, you know, so right now the budget is increasing by like 0.9%.
Right.
You know, so all of the other bargaining units settled at two. So if, if that would be the case, the wage line would increase by 2%.
Got it. And let me see here. I was noticing a, a big jump in the ambulance supplies that's in your budget. And is that? Will that likely be offset by increased revenue coming in from ambulance services?
Probably not because of the fact that, well, first of all, all any, not anything, but. A good portion of those expenses on the ambulance side might be recoupable under CARES, you know. But the, as Deputy LaChance mentioned, on the transports, our transport numbers are down for the year. So you know, there's a chance that the revenue will decrease as well. We increased this because if you look at what we spent last year in that account. And you know, anticipating that we need to continue to purchase additional PPE and all that stuff to make sure that our crews are safe. We just felt that we needed to do that. That may be something because we've increased that account. You know, every year for inflationary costs. But we may be able to flatten that out or reduce it next year if we're not in a, you know, COVID facing environment and all that stuff. So.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Bill?
Chief, you said that we don't pay for the academy. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We do not. So Massachusetts is one of a few states that the fire academy is actually funded by homeowners insurance. So there's money that comes from that, that actually pays for the majority of it. The state does fund a little bit for specific positions and stuff like that. But it does not cost us anything to send them there, which is why we, you know, love taking advantage of it. The only thing that we do is we have to cover their salary while they attend. So they're actually, they have to be a town employee to actually go. They can't do it on their own before they try to get hired.
Thank you. I didn't know that.
Any questions from the public on the fire department budget? Okay, chief and deputy, thank you again. Thank you for everything that you've done this year and what you continue to do. And you know, your, your team is going to play an integral role in vaccinations. Tom's going to talk about that shortly. And you know, your department. Members of your department have put themselves in harm's way to do their job in ways that. That, that are somewhat unique to the fire and emergency management department. And we, we don't take that for granted and we appreciate the continued professionalism and dedication. And I also appreciate your pursuing of the fear. Because that's just going to help us as a town as we move along. Particularly knowing there isn't a cap to that will, you know, will, will just be very helpful. Because your department's going to continue to incur costs this year above and beyond due to COVID.
Agreed. And thank you. And sorry for the video issues before. That couldn't have been timed any better.
No worries, no worries. So we're going to turn it over to interim chief Jones. Hopefully he's not going to have any, there you go. He's live. His video's not freezing. Welcome. And I also, I, I believe that we have Lieutenant O'Shea here as well. So chief, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mary. I'm actually going to let Harbor Master Corson start so that he doesn't have to stay for the animal control and my budget.
Terrific. And Joe and Bill, that's one, page 150 in our books.
Great. Thank you, chief, for, for letting me go first here. I'll keep it pretty short. The budget is pretty simple this year. The Harbor Masters mission is essentially protection of the harbor as well as life and property for people. The Harbor Masters mission is essentially protection of the harbor as well as life and property for people. We also enforce the laws and force educate, enforce and educate people on the laws and regulation governing the navigable waterways. So what does that mean in generic terms? Anyone that boats on the water or goes down to the harbor and is on any docks or piers. If they have any type of problem, we're going to be the ones that are going to respond, provide law, initial law enforcement on the water as well as EMS. We do other tasks such as renting moorings to transient boats as well as providing pump out services. So that's kind of the, the public safety on the water that we do. We also have, do a lot of harbor management. We manage roughly 1,500 moorings in town. We also handle a lot, a lot of projects such as the dredging project that we just completed last year. We have a boat ramp replacement project coming up hopefully this next fall. There's five islands within the town of Hangham, two of them see camping routinely throughout the summer. So we, we manage those five islands. We also have a very active boat ramp right at the inner harbor, several beaches. And then we handle various other events such as like the red carpet event that goes on at the bandstand every year. One of my other titles that we don't talk about too often is I'm also the shellfish constable. We haven't really had much shell fishing since 2016 because it's been shut down. But we started back up this year with some shell fishing and it looks like it might, the harvesting ability to harbor shellfish is improving. So we'll see that, that role is starting to increase over the next couple of years. There's really no funding right now for our shellfish duties because we haven't, haven't needed them. So likely as shellfish comes back, need to put some more funding into that. Shell fishing really involves us just inspecting the catches when they come in and overseeing the diggers out in my flats. To make sure that where they're digging is a person permitted, permitted area. Next slide. The this past FY 20, our revenues were about $343,000. I think that's our highest revenues that we've had so far. We bring in a fair amount of, most of our revenues are through mooring permits, but we do bring in other revenues such as transient rentals. Funds vary year to year depending on how many citations are written. We also have some word floats, assignment lists, the boat ramp brings in a little bit of money with commercial dollars. But this year we had a significant amount of revenues that were generated from late fees. Unfortunately, a lot of people thought that mooring fees were going to be waived with COVID. So they didn't renew their permits on time and they experienced late fees throughout the summer as they realized they had to pay that, that fee. So that was a challenge for us this year. I think late fees are actually going to be higher than the 19,500 that's listed here because some of them were collected in FY 21. So this was our highest year with revenues so far. Next slide, please. I like to put up a 10 year look back just so you can kind of see the steady progression and increase in, in revenues. Some of the increases contributed to increase in fees, but also it's, it's attributed to different management tactics that we use to maximize mooring areas and provide transient moorings to, to boaters so that they can come in and rent moorings. A couple of key initiatives coming up this year is for the last year or so, we've been working and updating the mooring regulations. We held probably one of the first big public hearings on Zoom. And I think we're the first ones to crash the town Zoom account. But we've been working on that. We, we tried to hang, hold off a little bit because of COVID, but there's a lot of administrative type things that do need to be updated in there so that they can be accurate with what's going on. So I think what I'm going to try to do this year is, is move forward with approving a lot of the, the administrative type things and leave some of the more interested areas for after COVID. We're also going to be hiring some additional assistant harbor masters this year. We're, we're short on staff right now. We've lost a couple to the police department and other areas. We did a small hiring last year, but I'll be looking to bring some more on this year. We completed the dredging project. We anticipate a boat ramp replacement in this coming fall. And we'll be managing the, the federal grant that we received for the boat. And also it's going to allow us to do some camera maintenance throughout the town. Next slide. COVID-19 was also an interesting effect on our department. Just shortly after it set in, we started up our boating season in April. People took to the waters very early this spring. Boat sales were very, very high. We rented every morning that we were able to, slips were full in town. It was very, very busy starting early on this year. Throughout the entire pandemic, the Harbor Masters office remained open. We controlled the waterways and the shorefront, shore fronts throughout the entire presently existing pandemic. We did craft several special regulations to limit anchoring and World's End. And the number of vessels that can tie a raft to a mooring. If you're familiar with World's End, we tend to get a lot of boats that come in from out of town. And they go to World's End, there's tends to be large rafts and it wasn't something we wanted to have to deal with this year. So restricted those numbers. It worked out overall very well. It kept us busy. There were a lot of people that wanted to continue to do their rafting and have their big gatherings. So we had to be very present and focused on educating and, and breaking up the rafts when they would occur. We had over 1,200 calls for service, which is very large for our small department over the summer months. In 2010, we had 600 calls for service or just over 600 calls for service. So over 10 years and taking on the calls related to, that occurred during COVID time, we had, we doubled our calls. We issued about 162 violations, which was rather large for the share. And we had over 239 single transient mooring rentals in World's End and the inner harbor. Pump out services were somewhat delayed, delayed this year for a couple of reasons. A, we wanted to make sure that when we started that program, we had a system in place that would allow for our staff to safely perform that duty. But also we had to hold off on it quite a bit because we needed the staff to be out of control to manage the large influx of boaters. And the issues that came along with routine boating such as engines dying and people having other types of boating issues. Next slide, please. Salaries, as you can see there, it's $208,000 roughly. And expenses are roughly $75,000. We don't have much increases here in salaries. It's, it's all normal routine increases. And when we get into expenses on grounds, there's a slight increase of about $1,800. But fuel's down about $1,100 and stationery is down about 1,000. So our budget actually has a net decrease this year of about $783.
Thank you. Joe, questions for Ken?
I'm unmuted. Good. No, the presentation was incredibly thorough. Ken, I mean, you, you, what you do is, is so outstanding and you do it in my view with a lean budget. So I, I really, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Bill?
You're welcome.
What is R and M grounds? What is that?
That's repair and maintenance of the grounds.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's a large, a large portion of that is our expense at the intermodal building. That's about $9,000 and the remainder of it we use to, to maintain the floats at Town Pier. There's porta potties. There's a bunch of just general things that we do around the waterfront that that's used for buoys that we need to maintain, stuff like that.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ken, I would echo, you know, as, as you said, a lot of people got out on the water early because it was a place where you could social distance and be outdoors. And I know in particular with some of the mooring regulations at World's End and things, there was a lot of confusion within the community about what was and wasn't allowed. Your communications were clear. They, you know, set the proper context. They, you know, when changes were made, you were right on top of it. And I, I think in particular in the early stages of COVID, that went a long way towards minimizing confusion. I would also just say as, as someone who's heard all of your budgets, this, this 10 year look back is interesting because what it demonstrates to me is, is that, you know, you continue to look at, at fees and things like that. You do all kinds of benchmarking to make sure that we're collecting fees that are, you know, comparable to other communities. But also, you know, a lot of the work that you've done to reorganize all the mooring fields has not only resulted in sort of safer conditions, but it's also maximizing the revenue. And you know, you, you have a budget that both has a revenue aspect to it and an expense aspect to it. And you manage both of them so well. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mary, I just had one quick comment. I, I noticed, you know, we talked earlier about Ken's proficiency with grants. I did notice Ken, you know, nothing, nothing, but last year was like 2 million. This year was only 200,000, you know, just saying.
Wait till next year.
Oh, thank you.
I thought we needed to laugh at whatever time it is.
Chief Jones, are we over to you now?
That sounds good. I think I'll, Michelle, I think we have animal control up first there. Great. So first of all, I'd like to thank the Harbor Master and his staff for the impressive job they did this year adapting to the challenge of this very popular boating season. With the animal control budget, I'm going to do my best to stand in for our animal control officer, Leslie Badger, who had a previous commitment tonight and could not be here. I think everyone knows how much Officer Badger does with her budget and she's really an amazing and dedicated officer who cares deeply for the animals in our community, both domestic and wild. So she is responsible for all the animals in the town of Hangham. For example, she helps reunite lost animals with her owners, does inspections on barns, monitors our parks and works in partnership with our officers and other animal welfare organizations to carry out her mission. Next slide, please. Officer Badger works with the town clerk on all domestic animal licensures and orders and oversees quarantines of animals. Next slide, please. On this slide, there's some of the highlights from 2020 where you can see she had a nearly 1,000 calls for, for services here. Next slide.
I don't think it was that slide.
No, I, I, yeah. Highlights from 2020, we can see she had nearly, the previous one was next slide, please. So Leslie continues to work on maximizing her interactions with the animals and people in our community with her patrols, volunteer trainings and educational programs and the social media accounts that she runs. Next slide, please. I'm just showing some of her activities there. So the last slide here just shows a breakdown of her salaries and expenses that are in her budget. I hope I was able to do Officer Badger some justice in covering her presentation this evening. And just, I'd like to publicly acknowledge how grateful I am for the incredible work she, she does all year round. So thank you, Officer Badger, for your hard work.
Joe, questions or comments on animal control?
No questions in the budget. I guess as a general question, are we doing enough to support her efforts? Because she, she does a lot with a little. And this is a town where there are animals, animal issues.
She sure does. She, you know, she had some part-time help previously. And like the Harbor Master, she lost her helpers when we hired them full-time. So we're looking to get her some, some part-time help, you know, similar to what we had before with those special officers that helped her. But she does rely on, you know, her counterparts and regional communities around us to help step in if she needs a hand.
Thank you, Chief. No other questions.
Bill?
No, other than to say that she does great work and she's, like you said, Chief, she, she really cares and we're lucky to have her. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Officer Badger is one of the most public facing employees that we have and everybody in town knows her. And her, her dedication to the citizens and to the animals just is, is incredible. And I think this is some of the hardest working money in Hangham. And, and I, I appreciate on the previous slide that she has come up with creative ways to stay engaged with the community in, in fulfilling her role.
She sure has. You want to do the police department budget next?
And I think that's page 160, Bill and Joe.
So you know, while we face some significant challenges here, including the COVID-19 pandemic, the men and women of the Hangup Police Department remain focused on our core values of integrity, service, excellence and leadership. I'd like to just take a second to recognize all the dedicated police department employees who continue to serve the residents and visitors to the town, you know, during these uncertain times. And we really have an incredible group of dedicated men and women that serve this community. And I am extremely proud of, of my team's efforts that they, especially what they put forth the past year. Next slide, please. So this chart shows our calls for service per calendar year. You can see that there is a decline in, in 2020 due to the impact of COVID. You know, quite simply, there's less traffic on the road, which translated to fewer motor vehicle stops and likewise motor vehicle accidents. And we also had a decrease in calls for service due to businesses being closed or having restricted hours and the governor's stay at home advisory from late evening right through till early, early mornings. Next slide, please. So in calendar year 2020, we had a total of 125 arrests and criminal summonses. Officer issued approximately 2,600 written warnings and citations for traffic violations to make the roadway safer in the town. Next slide, please. So we have a total of 83 employees, including the police officers, civilian staff and school crossing guards. Just an overview there of them. Next slide, please. So we, we felt the impact of COVID-19 and I'll cover some of those. You know, in the, that affected the PD and the next slide. But our focus moving forward through, you know, what I hope is the final stages of the pandemic is to work on re-engaging with our community partners and bring our in-person community programs back. We're going to focus on training and engaging our staff in continuing education programs, which are available through our training organizations and regional partners. We're going to refocus on bringing our civil rights officer, mental health clinician and other advocacy programs back into the community with in-person contacts with those in need of those services. Next slide, please. So the COVID-19 impacts, like, you know, everyone else, we felt the impacts of the pandemic. We had to suspend all in-person programming and visitors into the police station. We transitioned administrative and investigative personnel back into patrol. And we provided staff for the town's incident management teams and other groups such as the COVID reopening and respiratory reopening groups. We developed policy procedures to minimize risks of exposure to our officers and staff. And these were constantly changing, like Chief Murphy and Deputy LaChance said. And they're constantly changing, being updated as the pandemic progressed. Next slide, please. So this slide gives a rough breakdown of salary and expense budgets and shows some of our officers engaged in what they enjoy most, which is interacting with members of the community. And these are obviously pre-COVID photos there. So we have two additional requests. One is we're seeking some additional funding for a part-time mental health clinician. Many calls that we respond to involve mental health issues. And having a collision and clinician that works directly with the police department allows us to provide services right on scene or shortly thereafter with a follow-up by our clinician. or shortly thereafter with a follow up by our clinician. We currently share a clinician with the Waymouth Police Department that's covered with a grant. But we only have her dedicated here for eight hours per week. But she is on call, you know, if we if we need her in an emergency for immediate response. And otherwise, she provides follow up on the day that she is here. Having a part time clinician would allow us to provide these services more consistently throughout the week to the people who need it most. So we're also asking for an increase to our overtime budget, which would help close the gap that we face annually. Overtime costs are difficult to accurately predict due to the activities that are above and beyond the officer's regular shifts. Those could be anything from court appearances to training, special event security, and traffic control. So that is what I have. And I will, do you have any questions?
You know, I'll start. Thank you so much. That was some very comprehensive. It looks like in the budget, the budget looks like it's flat year over year. Would I be correct in saying that 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 contractual obligations are not in the budget?
Correct, just like the fire department, the they are not.
Yep. So again, Joe and Bill, that'll be like Articles four and five. I do notice, so your expenses are pretty much, you know, flat, flat across the board. It 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 looks as if it it looks as if there's sort of a couple of things going, you know, increasing, a couple of things decreasing. Are you comfortable that the expense budget contains what you need?
I am, yes. You know, I worked at sort of going over with my administrative team and then with Tom and Michelle, and I am comfortable with where the where those are now.
And just a couple of questions about the part time mental health clinician. Is there any money in the level services request for the mental health clinician?
No. So that's currently covered with a with a grant that we have in partnership with Waymouth that we got. So there is no money in there for for her, no.
And and the and the 32,580, how many hours a week is that? Is that eight?
So that would be 21 hours per week.
Okay. Yep. And, you know, I, you know, I know we have some of our advisory colleagues on the phone. You know, if if I, I guess the way I look at this is this this clinician is really part of level services. It's just that we have to find a new funding source for it. So I'm just, I'm just making a little plea to the advisory committee. Because this is a service that we're providing. I've I've read a lot recently about police departments having mental health clinicians, even like the standard I know in in some states of the country, or the goal is to have a mental health clinician on on every shift because because of the number of of calls that that would benefit from some guidance and and also because the men and women in the police department often you know, just given in performing their duties, sometimes that creates some stress and trauma. Is is, you know, just in terms of Massachusetts, is this something that's more commonplace? And are we are we sort of leading? Are we leading this effort? Are we lagging?
So I I think we're somewhere between. I don't think we're we're really lagging behind. But we've had a mental health clinician as part of this grant for, you know, better than than a year now. And, you know, she she was, you know, she unfortunately just left for another job. So we're in the process of getting a replacement for the grant between Hangum and Waymouth. But she was just an incredible part of our team here. She she went out with the officers, you know, riding on shift, should respond to them to calls as needed. We could bring her right to a scene if someone was in crisis and provide services there that, you know, an officer might not be able to provide on their own, or might have to bring them to a hospital to to get those services. So you know, they're really an invaluable part of of our team. They work extremely closely and very well with the officers. The officers, you know, engage with with her frequently. You know, and, you know, run things by her. She provides follow up to reports that they forward to where, you know, that think that didn't require a call up, but might, you know, warrant a little follow up by her, you know, offering services to a family member or the person themselves that was involved in the call. So you know, we we benefited a great deal by having, you know, her as part of our team. And I think having, you know, the additional hours here would would just continue to provide the services that people in the community of Hangum expect from our police department.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I I guess I I would, you know, I I think a lot of times with positions like this, we kind of have to start and work our way up. But given given the types of calls that the officers respond to, and the fact that in many cases there are underlying, you know, mental health, mental health considerations there. You know, this would be something that I would hope over time we could continue to increase the funding for because police officers are on duty 24/7. And and certainly 21 hours is helpful. But it's only a it's it's only a fraction of the time when these calls are happening.
Agreed.
Joe, questions, comments about the police budget?
I do, but I also think that selectmen seem to be on call 24/7. We should get some mental health. Seriously, is is the is it typical for the for the mental health clinician to be part of the police department or in another town department that basically goes along with the police?
So, yes, that's a good question. So these are specific to police departments. So a police mental health clinician is specifically trained to respond to with the with the officers if needed to a call and provide services right on scene. So, you know, it's a little different than than somebody who would be in another department that we could refer calls to. That she actually, in in our case, she was, you know, directly engaged and responded with officers. She had worked right out of our police station. You know, the officers could come up and talk to her in the hour she was here, leave things for, etc. So, you know, a mental health clinician in our case would be would be specifically for the police department.
Yeah, I I'm thinking of interactions with members of the public. If it's helpful to have someone who's not, you know, perceived as a in the police department who is is offering mental health services.
Yeah, this would be for for people that we had come in contact with, you know, during the course of our of our tours of duty, that we would, you know, have her interact with with them. But, you know, if somebody was in need of services, you know, we could potentially look at having. And again, this sort of goes back to our our facility being inadequate for the for the mission we have right now. So it would be nice to have a, you know, a room off the lobby or a community room like we had spoken about during the public safety building. We do just that with, you know, a person could give in and engage without coming, you know, inside the police station. So
That is, in fact, one of the reasons that we're advancing for the for the public safety facility. With respect to the budget, everything does seem level, except I noticed a dip in the educational expense. And of all things, I'm thinking education should be going up.
Yeah.
What is what's behind that?
Yeah, that's a contractual obligation where the officers receive a stipend for degrees. So as as, you know, more senior people retire, younger officers come into at a at a lower step, and therefore the percentage will be lower as well.
No other questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Go.
Bill?
Quick question. I know you were asking for additional 40,000 in overtime. Well, I'm assuming that the the three new officers were hiring and that should be on board soon will help with overtime costs. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, you know, new officers will help with with overtime costs. But you won't see, you know, as dramatic a decreases as you might think, because those those new officers will also incur costs such as, you know, court time, training costs, because they're they're subject to the same mandatory trainings and everything that that all the other offices are. So while you will see a reduction in in certain categories of overtime, like shift coverage, you you won't see maybe as big an impact as you as you think by filling the open slots.
When are they going to be on board?
So, yeah, the three that we have in the academy now, they are scheduled to graduate at the end of February. They will have three months of field training after that. And then they'll, you know, after they graduate the field training program, they will be assigned shifts to work.
Great, thank you. I'm going to open this up. I see that there is a hand. I'm going to recognize Mr. Turner. If you could please give your name and address. And if you could please direct questions or comments to the chair to me, I would appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Hey, hey, folks. My name is Andrew Turner. I live at 172 Wampatuck Road in Hangum. And I'm new to town budgeting. So I just had some basic questions and some comments. And I'll adjust those to, I guess, Ms. Power.
Thank you.
The first, the first was a comment is I'm absolutely supportive of investments in mental health. And so that's just a comment. Mental health counseling. The second is, one of the things I thought was useful and helpful in some of the other presentations was the benchmarking that folks had done relative to other either other communities or other things. And I didn't see that in this presentation. It'd be be interesting for me to understand as an example, you know, how big a police force we have in Hangum relative to some other communities of comparable size, etc. That's one point that might be interesting. Second thing is, um, seems that there's a detailed set of materials that y'all are working from that 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 we don't have. And the slides for this particular presentation were quite quick. Is there a place where I could resource those?
You sure can, Mr. Turner. On the town website, we are posting all of the budget materials. And so all of the presentations from this evening, plus there are also some financial reports with the detailed budget items by line. And those will also be posted tomorrow.
Okay, great. So they're not available now?
They're they're not available now. They will be posted in the morning. We we often make changes like right up until meeting time. So those will be available tomorrow. Michelle, will those be on the Board of Selectmen webpage? Will those be on the Town Accountant page?
We'll probably put them on the Board of Selectmen page, Mary.
Yeah. So, Mr. Turner, if you go to Hangum MA and then Board of Selectmen. And and certainly, if you have any follow up questions, our email addresses are listed, and we'd be we'd be happy to answer them.
That's great. Yeah, just just two more pieces of feedback is I'll look for the materials. One is I noticed that there was a line item for $100,000 in equipment. I'd be curious to know what's in that that may be in the supplementary materials.
Um, yeah, Chief, Chief, could you speak to, I I believe it was on page eight of your presentation, it was $100,100 for officer equipment? I'm sure that the detail is there, but perhaps you could answer Mr. Turner's question.
Absolutely. That that's for officer equipment and uniform contractual obligation for replacement of uniforms. And also replacing any equipment and uniform items that are damaged.
Yeah. Can you just tell for the for Mr. Turner and the public in terms of the equipment that under the collective bargaining agreement, we are responsible for for providing, what does an officer get?
So initial issue? Yeah, initial issue, the officer would be issued two sets of long sleeve uniforms, two sets of short sleeve uniforms, a bullet resistant vest, body armor. They issued a duty belt with firearm, radio, you know, taser handcuffs, you know, all those things. Pants, boots, yeah, hat, and then outerwear. So you know, jackets, rain raincoat, things like that.
Thank you. And, Mr. Turner, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, my only my last one was, I noticed there was something called unfunded mandatory training. And I'd just be curious, not just for that line item that I think was into overtime to close the gap, the $100,000 gap, but additional, like a complete list of training. And I think that this echoed something before. I would be curious on the trainings that that the officers are participating in annually.
Sure. And, you know, maybe what we could do is is I know that's not in the materials, but maybe we could ask for that as a as a follow up. And Chief Jones, I suspect that that might also be helpful to the advisory committee. So, Mr. Turner, if 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 you wanted to email me, it's power M@hangum-MA.gov. When that document is prepared, I'd be happy to forward it to you. I think I think it may need to be prepared. So if you could give us a couple of days.
Sure, of course.
We'd be glad to. We'd be glad to do that again. I I think it would be instructive for the advisory committee as well.
Wonderful. Thanks for hearing my comments.
Well, thank you. No, thank you for joining us tonight. Anyone else? Okay, we have a repurposing of a capital request. This is repurposing some capital for training equipment and personal protective gear. Chief, if you perhaps, is is that you or is that Tom?
Tom, I think, before I take it, or?
I know. Yeah, Dave, you can, Chief Riley, you can take it. Sorry.
Okay, great. So we're looking to repurpose a portion of the capital that was originally slated to remodel and bring our evidence room up to current standards. You know, with the possibility of a new public safety building, we didn't want to spend funds unnecessarily on that. So we'd be looking to invest a small portion of that into improving the organization and storage of that existing space with some new shelving and containers. And then the remainder would be spent on some training equipment. So in years past, we've been able to to borrow personal protective equipment, such as face masks, neck guards, gloves from a number of different agencies across our region to supplement our own. And that's involved, you know, the Training Academy and all different departments around the the region. So we've been, you know, sent our officers out to pick this up and bring it back. Unfortunately, with with COVID, you know, it's proven to be impossible at this point, and we're not able to provide unnecessary training to our officers. So with this additional equipment, we'd be able to issue each officer their own protective equipment for training, allow us to have, you know, here our own sets of necessary equipment to hold the mandatory training without having to borrow from multiple different agencies, which currently none of them are actually allowing the equipment to be borrowed anyway.
And and the board received a package of information with detailed quotes. It looks like you're looking to repurpose this under $26,000.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Joe, any questions?
No, I've looked at the 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 amount, which is $25,904.90. And I've got no questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay, any questions from the public? Okay, I'd accept a motion.
I'd move to approve the request of the police department to repurpose to repurpose a portion of fiscal year 21 capital funds for training equipment and personal protective gear.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Michelle, I'm just going to ask you to put this up. I'm not going to walk through it. But Joe and Bill, this was sent to you, to my colleagues on the advisory committee. I think you got a copy. Understanding that the town is going to be facing, you know, a lot of financial decisions this year, which may be of of significant consequence. The Board of Selectmen's Office is beginning something that we're calling Inside Town Finances. And the the purpose here is to provide kind of a one page overview of different financial topics and to make those available in a library on the town website. A lot of it is information that we've all seen before in public meetings. Some of it's part of the financial presentations. But the idea here is just to sort of put it into sort of what I would consider to be bite sized pieces. This first volume speaks to revenue. And essentially, it just is, it's doing two things. What you see on the screen, part one, is just showing where our revenue comes from. And then, Michelle, if you want to just scroll down, the second part of this just shows how the tax levy is calculated. So again, we're going to put these up on the town website. Michelle and Tom, I was thinking that maybe tomorrow we could send this one out in the Hangum News Alert just to let people know that it's there. But every week, we will update this with a different topic. just to let people know that it's there. Uh, but every week we will update this with a different topic. So other topics might be things like, um, what is proposition two and a half? Uh, what are local receipts? What are expenses? What's an enterprise fund? What's fund balance? And the concept would be that by the time we get to town meeting, we've got a series of these, you know, 15 or 20 of these that help answer basic questions about town finances that can be a library to help inform and educate the citizenry as it's going forward to make deci- financial decisions both now and into the future. So that's just a, a quick look at what this is. Um, and uh, uh, this, this will be a, a weekly, a weekly kind of thing.
Outstanding, Mary. Thank you.
Um, Tom, COVID-19 update?
Sure. Thank you, Mary. Um, so as of yesterday, the Mass Department of Public Health is reporting 417,568 total confirmed COVID-19 cases in Massachusetts, of which 28,588 are in Plymouth County. Hingham cases continue to rise. As of Friday, Hingham remains in the state's red COVID-19 category with 1,005 total cases compared to 622 total cases just one month ago. Our average daily incidence rate is 58.6 per 100,000 people over the prior 14 days compared to 31.24 one month ago. These are very big increases. The percent of people testing positive for COVID-19 is also rising. The percent positivity for the last 14 days was 5.29% for Hingham compared to 3.32% one month ago. Uh, Mary, if you'd like, I'd, or if you, if you indulge me, I'd like to go through our vaccine rollout plan.
Please.
So our vaccine distribution, uh, so vaccine distribution continues across the state of Massachusetts. The state has announced a three-phase vaccine rollout plan that corresponds with the CDC recommendations. Phase one will run from about December 2020 through February 2021 and will cover the following people listed in order of priority. Clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers doing direct and COVID-facing care. Long-term care facilities, rest homes and assisted living facilities. Police, fire and emergency medical services. Congregate care settings, including corrections and shelters. Home-based healthcare workers and healthcare workers doing non-COVID-facing care. The state continues to update definitions for people covered by those groups on its when can I get the COVID-19 website link? And by the way, these links are all available through this um, through this update that will be posted to our website in the morning. The state has been working directly with hospitals and other healthcare facilities to, to vaccinate the people in Group 1A, which is the clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers doing direct and COVID-facing care. Many of those people just received their second vaccine dose. People in Group 1B, long-term care facilities, rest homes and assisted living facilities are being vaccinated as part of the federal pharmacy partnership program. Staff from the Town's Vaccine Planning Group are in touch with these facilities in Hingham on a weekly basis. So far, Linden Ponds has held two vaccination clinics to cover 530 residents and another clinic is scheduled for this week. Queen Anne's Nursing Home has vaccinated 68 out of 100 residents. And the Harbor House Nursing Home continues to work through its vaccinations. The town partnered with the towns of Hassett, Hull, Norwell and Situate. Sorry, I gotta scroll down. Um, Norwell and Situate to secure vaccines from the state for our police, fire, emergency medical services personnel, uh, which is considered to be Group 1C. Our Vaccine Planning Group is coordinating clinics to have Hingham paramedics vaccinate our public safety employees. As of today, we have vaccinated 90 public safety employees and have another 60 individuals scheduled to get vaccinated later this week. The state will be publishing more information tomorrow about vaccination of people in Group 1D, which are congregant care settings, and continues to plan for additional groups later in the rollout plan. The Town's Vaccination Planning Group is coordinating logistics for the town so that we're prepared to do our part. We are doing everything we can, given the information and supplies that we receive from the state. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Uh, Joe, questions for Tom?
Uh, yeah, Tom, uh, I've gotten calls. I'm sure others have. Um, they want to know, where, where do they go to find out when, when they can get their shot? Um, is there a phone number, a website? Where should they go? Um, where should our residents be directed?
I would direct them to the Department of Public Health's website, um, which it uh gives information on the different categories. I will say that the DPH, if you're not in one of those early groups, the DPH will not be able to provide that information. That's not available yet. Um, while frustrating, uh, it's, it's not available yet. I will say that I've noticed in the last week or two, uh, or really the last, you know, couple of days, a significant increase in the, in the, the state's ability to uh help the different vaccination groups actually administer vaccinations. Um, we here in, in town, like you saw, we've administered approximately 700 um, or 700 people in our community have been vaccinated between public safety personnel and nursing home uh, and congregant care living, uh, folks in congregant care living situations. So it's, it's starting to ramp up. There's not a definitive plan for folks over 75 or folks over 65 from the state that's been disseminated in terms of dates yet. Um, but I would, I would monitor the state's DPH website for that information.
Thank you. I know you've been on top of it. Uh, Susan Sarnie's been on top of it. Um, and uh, it's a priority for the town and I appreciate uh all your efforts. Thank you.
Nope, absolutely is. You're welcome.
Bill, questions for Tom?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I saw a, a portion of, of a press conference from the governor today. And he indicated that up until now, it's been very difficult to get a sense of when the state will be receiving vaccinations and in what quantity. And he sort of commented that as this is moving along, uh, the state seems to have a greater ability to have a line of sight to that because he didn't want to, he was saying, you know, I don't want to set things up and then not have, have the ability to, to deliver the vaccines. But I think, I think Tom's comment about things picking up in the next few days. Um, uh, hopefully that's, that's moving in the right direction. I tell you, it, it's um, it, it's wonderful to hear that 500 of our fellow residents in Linden Ponds have been vaccinated. That is one of the best numbers that I think we've heard tonight. Uh, members of the public, any questions on the COVID-19 update? Okay, uh, public comment on items not on the agenda? And I think we talked about, about everything in the town tonight.
There's nothing left.
Town Administrator Reports, Michelle?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Tonight, thank you, Mary.
Joe?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, actually, yes, very briefly, um, you know, one of the things I talked about much earlier was the, the, our efforts to uh keep the ferry service going, even though the MBTA was closing it down. Uh, and um, you know, they're, they are continuing it, the Hingham Hull route. Uh, so today there was a preliminary meeting and on Thursday evening, uh, there will be a broader meeting that the MBTA is now taking efforts to improve the ferry dock located at the, at the Hingham Shipyard. Uh, they're going to spend approximately $17 million uh on the existing floating dock and access gateways to upgrade them to improve the rider experience and bring it into compliance with updated accessibility standards. Uh, so the meeting is January 14th, which is Thursday at 6:00 PM. Um, and the information, uh, let me see if I can find it. Let's see, uh, bear with me. Here we go. Um, so all the information, if you go to MBTA.com slash Hingham Ferry Dock, and I can send that uh, to get posted to the town website, MBTA.com slash Hingham Ferry Dock. Uh, that is all the information about the meeting that is scheduled uh on Thursday, January 14th at 6:00 PM with the MBTA. That's all I got. Thank you.
Well, I hope that means that the ferry's sticking around. Um, Andy McElhany, I see that you have a hand. So before I go to Bill, did, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mary. Um, I, I, I had a dentist appointment today and I was shocked to find out that dentists are not among healthcare workers who are getting uh COVID vaccine shots. And I, I mean, I, I don't understand that for the life of me, considering the circumstances under which a dentist has to work. But um, I wondered if there's any flexibility so that at least the dentists in Hingham uh, could uh be, uh, have shots made available for them.
Yeah, um, it, before I ask Tom to answer that, Andy, just for the record, could you give your address?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Andy McElhany, 26 Myers Farm Road slash Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Andy. Uh, yeah, that's one we've been struggling with ourselves for quite some time. Unfortunately, nobody asked me when they were making these priority orders. Um, and but here's the problem, Andy, is we're, we're allocated um, uh, shots, uh, or vaccinations uh by category. And we have, we put together our needs by category. So we don't have additional shots or vaccinations available for people that are outs, that are out of, um, out of, would be out of order. The dentists are considered in phase, I'm waiting, I'm slowly waiting for Michelle to jump in and tell me the right answer. One E, thank you. One E, Andy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Andy is, uh, when, when the public safety uh vaccinations were coming, we actually had to provide a list of all of the names of people. So it wasn't just, you know, w- we need, we need 57 vaccines for the fire department. Names had to be provided. Um, there's, there's that level of attention to detail right now.
Wow.
Which, which hopefully bodes well in terms of making sure that, that people are, uh, people are getting it. Um, Bill, any, uh, any, anything to report in Selectman Reports?
Uh, not very, Mary, thank you.
Um, you know, the only thing I will just say, first of all, I want to thank, um, I want to thank everybody for uh for your engagement uh in this meeting, particularly Tom, Michelle and Heidi. Um, you work a long day. Tuesdays are your long day and, and this one is really long. Um, it, uh, during every budget, during all these budget meetings, um, while, while they're long, um, I always walk out of them with such an appreciation for all the very important work that's done in the town. And, and all of the people who, in, in so many different ways, some very, very public facing, others not so public facing, to really make this community what it is, whether it's the people at GAR Hall that are working to take care of that 100-year-old building. Um, to our first responders, uh, to our finance team who uh, not for nothing, but they were instrumental in maintaining our AAA bond rating, which is just going to pay off in spades. Um, I'm just so proud to be part of this community. I'm proud to serve with, with everybody who just is playing such a big role in making this community so special. Um, I, I wish that everybody had the opportunity to hear about all these wonderful things that go on in Hingham. Um, and, and I know we'll be, we'll be taking up more budgets over the next few weeks. So we'll have an opportunity to hear about more good things. Uh, so with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.